The first part of the video is a little bit of a surprise to me, because I had a lot of fun with the camera.[7.00][7.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[10.00][10.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[13.00][13.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[16.00][16.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[19.00][19.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[22.00][22.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[25.00][25.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[28.00][28.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[31.00][31.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[34.00][34.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[37.00][37.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[40.00][40.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[43.00][43.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[46.00][46.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[49.00][49.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[52.00][52.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[55.00][55.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[58.00][58.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[61.00][61.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[64.00][64.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[67.00][67.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[70.00][70.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[73.00][73.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[76.00][76.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[79.00][79.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[82.00][82.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[85.00][85.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[88.00][88.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[91.00][91.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[94.00][94.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[97.00][97.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[100.00][100.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[103.00][103.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[106.00][106.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[109.00][109.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[112.00][112.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[115.00][115.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[118.00][118.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[121.00][121.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[124.00][124.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[127.00][127.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[130.00][130.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[133.00][133.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[136.00][136.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[139.00][139.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[142.00][142.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[145.00][145.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[148.00][148.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[151.00][151.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[154.00][154.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[157.00][157.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[160.00][160.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[163.00][163.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[166.00][166.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[169.00][169.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[172.00][172.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[175.00][175.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[178.00][178.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[181.00][181.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[184.00][184.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[187.00][187.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[190.00][190.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[193.00][193.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[196.00][196.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[199.00][199.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[202.00][202.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[205.00][205.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[208.00][208.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[211.00][211.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[214.00][214.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[217.00][217.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[220.00][220.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[223.00][223.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[226.00][226.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[229.00][229.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[232.00][232.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[235.00][235.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[238.00][238.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[241.00][241.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[244.00][244.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[247.00][247.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[250.00][250.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[253.00][253.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[256.00][256.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[259.00][259.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[262.00][262.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[265.00][265.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[268.00][268.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[271.00][271.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[274.00][274.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[277.00][277.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[280.00][280.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[283.00][283.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[286.00][286.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[289.00][289.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[292.00][292.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[295.00][295.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[298.00][298.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[301.00][301.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[304.00][304.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[307.00][307.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[310.00][310.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[313.00][313.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[316.00][316.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[319.00][319.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[322.00][322.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[325.00][325.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[328.00][328.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[331.00][331.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[334.00][334.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[337.00][337.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[340.00][340.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[343.00][343.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[346.00][346.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[349.00][349.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[352.00][352.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[355.00][355.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[358.00][358.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[361.00][361.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[364.00][364.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[367.00][367.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[370.00][370.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[373.00][373.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[376.00][376.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[379.00][379.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[382.00][382.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[385.00][385.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[388.00][388.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[391.00][391.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[394.00][394.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[397.00][397.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[400.00][400.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[403.00][403.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[406.00][406.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[409.00][409.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[412.00][412.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[415.00][415.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[418.00][418.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[421.00][421.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[424.00][424.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[427.00][427.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[430.00][430.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[433.00][433.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[436.00][436.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[439.00][439.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[442.00][442.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[445.00][445.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[448.00][448.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[451.00][451.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[454.00][454.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[457.00][457.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[460.00][460.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[463.00][463.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[466.00][466.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[469.00][469.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[472.00][472.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[475.00][475.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[478.00][478.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[481.00][481.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[484.00][484.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[487.00][487.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[490.00][490.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[493.00][493.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[496.00][496.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[499.00][499.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[502.00][502.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[505.00][505.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[508.00][508.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[511.00][511.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[514.00][514.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[517.00][517.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[520.00][520.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[523.00][523.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[526.00][526.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[529.00][529.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[532.00][532.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[535.00][535.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[538.00][538.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[541.00][541.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[544.00][544.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[547.00][547.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[550.00][550.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[553.00][553.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[556.00][556.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[559.00][559.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[562.00][562.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[565.00][565.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[568.00][568.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[571.00][571.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[574.00][574.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[577.00][577.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[580.00][580.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[583.00][583.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[586.00][586.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[589.00][589.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[592.00][592.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[595.00][595.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[598.00][598.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[601.00][601.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[604.00][604.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[607.00][607.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[610.00][610.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[613.00][613.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[616.00][616.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[619.00][619.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[622.00][622.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[625.00][625.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[628.00][628.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[631.00][631.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[634.00][634.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[637.00][637.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[640.00][640.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[643.00][643.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[646.00][646.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[649.00][649.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[652.00][652.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[655.00][655.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[658.00][658.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[661.00][661.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[664.00][664.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[667.00][667.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[670.00][670.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[673.00][673.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[676.00][676.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[679.00][679.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[682.00][682.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[685.00][685.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[688.00][688.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[691.00][691.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[694.00][694.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[697.00][697.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[700.00][700.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[703.00][703.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[706.00][706.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[709.00][709.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[712.00][712.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[715.00][715.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[718.00][718.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[721.00][721.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[724.00][724.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[727.00][727.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[730.00][730.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[733.00][733.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[736.00][736.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[739.00][739.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[742.00][742.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[745.00][745.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[748.00][748.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[751.00][751.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[754.00][754.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[757.00][757.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[760.00][760.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[763.00][763.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[766.00][766.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[769.00][769.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[772.00][772.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[775.00][775.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[778.00][778.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[781.00][781.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[784.00][784.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[787.00][787.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[790.00][790.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[793.00][793.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[796.00][796.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[799.00][799.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[802.00][802.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[805.00][805.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[808.00][808.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[811.00][811.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[814.00][814.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[817.00][817.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[820.00][820.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[823.00][823.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[826.00][826.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[829.00][829.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[832.00][832.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[835.00][835.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[838.00][838.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[841.00][841.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[844.00][844.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[847.00][847.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[850.00][850.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[853.00][853.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[856.00][856.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[859.00][859.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[862.00][862.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[865.00][865.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[868.00][868.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[871.00][871.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[874.00][874.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[877.00][877.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[880.00][880.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[883.00][883.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[886.00][886.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[889.00][889.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[892.00][892.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[895.00][895.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[898.00][898.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[901.00][901.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[904.00][904.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[907.00][907.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[910.00][910.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[913.00][913.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[916.00][916.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[919.00][919.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[922.00][922.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[925.00][925.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[928.00][928.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[931.00][931.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[934.00][934.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[937.00][937.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[940.00][940.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[943.00][943.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[946.00][946.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[949.00][949.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[952.00][952.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[955.00][955.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[958.00][958.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[961.00][961.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[964.00][964.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[967.00][967.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[970.00][970.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[973.00][973.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[976.00][976.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[979.00][979.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[982.00][982.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[985.00][985.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[988.00][988.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[991.00][991.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[994.00][994.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[997.00][997.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1000.00][1000.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1003.00][1003.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1006.00][1006.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1009.00][1009.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1012.00][1012.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1015.00][1015.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1018.00][1018.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1021.00][1021.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1024.00][1024.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1027.00][1027.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1030.00][1030.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1033.00][1033.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1036.00][1036.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1039.00][1039.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1042.00][1042.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1045.00][1045.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1048.00][1048.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1051.00][1051.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1054.00][1054.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1057.00][1057.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1060.00][1060.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1063.00][1063.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1066.00][1066.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1069.00][1069.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1072.00][1072.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1075.00][1075.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1078.00][1078.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1081.00][1081.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1084.00][1084.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1087.00][1087.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1090.00][1090.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1093.00][1093.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1096.00][1096.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1099.00][1099.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1102.00][1102.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1105.00][1105.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1108.00][1108.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1111.00][1111.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1114.00][1114.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1117.00][1117.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1120.00][1120.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1123.00][1123.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1126.00][1126.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1129.00][1129.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1132.00][1132.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1135.00][1135.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1138.00][1138.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1141.00][1141.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1144.00][1144.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1147.00][1147.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1150.00][1150.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1153.00][1153.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1156.00][1156.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1159.00][1159.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1162.00][1162.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1165.00][1165.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1168.00][1168.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1171.00][1171.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1174.00][1174.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1177.00][1177.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1180.00][1180.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1183.00][1183.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1186.00][1186.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1189.00][1189.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1192.00][1192.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1195.00][1195.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1198.00][1198.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1201.00][1201.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1204.00][1204.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1207.00][1207.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1210.00][1210.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1213.00][1213.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1216.00][1216.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1219.00][1219.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1222.00][1222.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1225.00][1225.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1228.00][1228.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1231.00][1231.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1234.00][1234.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1237.00][1237.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1240.00][1240.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1243.00][1243.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1246.00][1246.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1249.00][1249.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1252.00][1252.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1255.00][1255.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1258.00][1258.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1261.00][1261.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1264.00][1264.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1267.00][1267.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1270.00][1270.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1273.00][1273.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1276.00][1276.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1279.00][1279.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1282.00][1282.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1285.00][1285.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1288.00][1288.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1291.00][1291.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1294.00][1294.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1297.00][1297.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1300.00][1300.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1303.00][1303.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1306.00][1306.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1309.00][1309.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1312.00][1312.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1315.00][1315.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1318.00][1318.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1321.00][1321.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1324.00][1324.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1327.00][1327.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1330.00][1330.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1333.00][1333.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1336.00][1336.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1339.00][1339.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1342.00][1342.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1345.00][1345.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1348.00][1348.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1351.00][1351.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1354.00][1354.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1357.00][1357.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1360.00][1360.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1363.00][1363.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1366.00][1366.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1369.00][1369.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1372.00][1372.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1375.00][1375.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1378.00][1378.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1381.00][1381.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1384.00][1384.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1387.00][1387.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1390.00][1390.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1393.00][1393.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1396.00][1396.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1399.00][1399.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1402.00][1402.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1405.00][1405.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1408.00][1408.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1411.00][1411.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1414.00][1414.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1417.00][1417.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1420.00][1420.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1423.00][1423.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1426.00][1426.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1429.00][1429.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1432.00][1432.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1435.00][1435.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1438.00][1438.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1441.00][1441.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1444.00][1444.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1447.00][1447.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1450.00][1450.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1453.00][1453.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1456.00][1456.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1459.00][1459.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1462.00][1462.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1465.00][1465.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1468.00][1468.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1471.00][1471.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1474.00][1474.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1477.00][1477.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1480.00][1480.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1483.00][1483.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1486.00][1486.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1489.00][1489.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1492.00][1492.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1495.00][1495.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1498.00][1498.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1501.00][1501.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1504.00][1504.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1507.00][1507.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1510.00][1510.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1513.00][1513.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1516.00][1516.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1519.00][1519.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1522.00][1522.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1525.00][1525.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1528.00][1528.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1531.00][1531.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1534.00][1534.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1537.00][1537.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1540.00][1540.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1543.00][1543.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1546.00][1546.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1549.00][1549.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1552.00][1552.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1555.00][1555.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1558.00][1558.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1561.00][1561.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1564.00][1564.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1567.00][1567.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1570.00][1570.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1573.00][1573.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1576.00][1576.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1579.00][1579.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1582.00][1582.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1585.00][1585.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1588.00][1588.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1591.00][1591.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1594.00][1594.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1597.00][1597.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1600.00][1600.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1603.00][1603.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1606.00][1606.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1609.00][1609.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1612.00][1612.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1615.00][1615.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1618.00][1618.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1621.00][1621.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1624.00][1624.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1627.00][1627.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1630.00][1630.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1633.00][1633.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1636.00][1636.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1639.00][1639.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1642.00][1642.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1645.00][1645.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1648.00][1648.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1651.00][1651.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1654.00][1654.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1657.00][1657.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1660.00][1660.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1663.00][1663.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1666.00][1666.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1669.00][1669.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1672.00][1672.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1675.00][1675.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1678.00][1678.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1681.00][1681.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1684.00][1684.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1687.00][1687.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1690.00][1690.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1693.00][1693.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1696.00][1696.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1699.00][1699.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1702.00][1702.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1705.00][1705.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1708.00][1708.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1711.00][1711.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1714.00][1714.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1717.00][1717.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1720.00][1720.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1723.00][1723.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1726.00][1726.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1729.00][1729.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1732.00][1732.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1735.00][1735.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.[1738.00][1738.00]70 seconds of video with a little bit of a surprise.
I think first and foremost it is important, we do the usual thing as Ghanaians, that we have to apologize for the list out of the program. It wasn't intended. And it looks like now in Ghana, if you are going to have a success of a program, it is very important you start with an apology. It looks like you are going to have a very beautiful program. But I think it is important we render that apology, that some people have been here for so long and the program getting started yet. We apologize for those who came early and were still not able to start the program. But we are most grateful that your patience has kept you to this hour that we're going to start the program. Thank you so much for your patience. The Ngye P U R C Nema, Public Utilities Regulatory Commission, Northern Region and Savannah Regions Public Hearing for the year 2025 to 2030 Major Tariff Review here at the U D S Multi-Purpose Auditorium. Ladies and gentlemen, you are very welcome and thank you so much for your patience. And of course, as usual, it is important we start the program with a prayer, that it has been his gracious guidance that we are all here today. And we are going to be giving the microphone to our leader. He appears to be Dr. Jamal Dean to come and give us the opening prayer Islamically before we continue with the program.
Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah.
I think we've been sitting for so long now and before we get ourselves into the mood of the program, it is important we get some energy to keep on the program. For that reason, we are going to be inviting our culture tube to come in and give us a display of performance, just like five, 10 minutes, before we put ourselves into that mood of a prayer. Okay, five minutes, alright. My director of the program is saying just five minutes and the culture tube will come in and put that in that mood of a program because we've been sitting for a while now.
Thank you.
All right, uh-huh. Amboufanga, na na abarkana. Tiriabakana, nabengona angokana. All right, ladies and gentlemen, once again, that was a very beautiful performance by the culture proof and it's important we give them a very big round of applause. Selaka tepahnu pamsantaba, amboufanga, tepaya, microphone no way, abba, kanaala. Um, mnti hata po nyalteji wama, dalirjaldan tathana, dadan laanti, deninye tetengban wama, ukumsi, tuma doso odam biyane, kalala bebiyan bo wama adenyala, bebiyan mezanteselu, nebe tunpumsa, nebe yalboora, bumi ni Ghana Water Limited and of course, ne netku, be greekku, be viary, lala, tuma doso ngoma, bim biyanti yalishalembala, nete banya eselu, kalala nirbo wama, katemina ba man de tabuka, tongo ma, nerema labuka, ta nete po hatoyuru, tabviyala ngaa, ka showera biyana katenyanya, temini bajima, de jindi, kasuhudu biyane, kazabakan, kadragragre kane, akubora nyanyelmane, iren kama illegal connection yetwa, because viary be netku, be greekku, na atokuboli yetwa, illegal ya netu yetwa akana, and same as Ghana Water Company, deso, P U R C nwa ma, bananyefukumsi duchal bambiyan, anzantetanambanselu wama, yalmo sara ne biyane, kabatjaka rapa, kambongwama, bukana malishale ne bezanteti, kabezantaba, kabezanteti, mnti hadijin nahgomi katijin wama, netenyanya, tenye yu poha ne tabsham, nyanya temini bazaha, tenye nan enfana ne tabsham, mpo nyalna lala jijin tongo ma, and of course, tenozoson pam, kasamba, kaninkura, kananema, kababetijin wama apuni, deso, tichantou ne biyala, tenzan, tenanema, asansalema, anzangujimwama, tu ama, talahan yalay, neji debian kaman de mbonwama, ki malto ndana, mnti halte dalafana, mo yalte ma kaman, ana halay inirba, inayina cha chapulode, samsoni ipigi, inirba imma pumponi, mo yenye itun dan ki chana, ladapsa biyan pamtilema, biyan pampana, biyan pamenisa, ne malto ndana, kasatu toondana, kalala toondana wama, basate toondan, tal wama, kapabla na adelji, deso, minasa, hanangla zoxon, katempasu, no nyetijin wama toondana, o nyetijin wama dambulu, o nyetijin wama lana, desoxon ma, ngo nyekarachi, kalahnyekaramba, kanyango wumsara, kalahnyenaya, desozoxon zakarle nyala, nete maljimo, kango nyetijin wama toondan be tedaambulu ma, koto mnyena, di kunyo pamleke wama, akoyen yalka abesa, namo akoyen zantumtuma, kanya cha chimbogaga, kana chimbogaga karafiaba. Donkunye shambala, abora BJ, dien chefsama karafiaba sa, elalani ngerwama apui kana kana, mnti tohasedakban lapuna katzen, mbonobe katenyanya, osadi etijin wama. Ladies and gentlemen, I think it is important, we all know that, a special gathering like this would definitely need a leader, who would be an authority, and of course, to make sure goes on well and ends war, and of course, from the lenses of the PRC and organizers of the program, they've been necessary to get a leader who again is a chief in Dagon, and of course, a leader, and of course, an institution. He's gonna be the chairman of this wonderful location, before I mention his name, let me take you through some of his credentials, and of course, in that way, people might begun to realize who is gonna be our chairman. He has the master position development, very well, member of the chartered institute of administrators and management consultants Ghana, and an organization development certified consultant, and of course, he worked as the assistant registrar with the University of Ghana Legon from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and two, before moving to Tamil Technical University Tatu as the substantive registrar. He happens to be the current registrar of Tamil Technical University Tatu, and again, like I said earlier on, he is a chief of Shao, in Yavu, Shona, is our chairman of the occasion. Ladies and gentlemen, with a very big round of applause in ehana, let's welcome, and of course, give our chief a very big round of applause. Kaman nareyarma, yetijima dambulu te toondana, o nyalan na, kalahnye bitwaara, kanye yunda, kalanye shukuruzaha toondana, desozoxon yalay, nete zanlala tejimwama, anzango wano nete paaya, chairman, unko emmermana, kana kude microphoneo nyanya, assati, na ande etijin wama, kabapui kana kana, kate introduce si tepambama karano, pa yasolo yaha, a very big round of applause, selaka tepahnu pamsantie te toondana, netenama, ngo nyetijima dambulu, in yamshula na.
Mr. Simo, please, what did you tell me to say? What did you tell me to say? Okay, thank you very much. In fact, I am here on behalf of His Majesty, the Chief of Sanargu. So please, anything I say here, which is good and acceptable, credit goes to His Majesty, the Sanagna, but if anything goes wrong, please, I'm to blame. Let me start on a very, very light note. De DJ ma, ti pahmo okupian liabremeh, silmisli dagbanle, silmisli dagbanle, toh, ami unbanetu tohasu be, de kantie de da da maha, ami so yukumbongo nakte be, kumbongo namjane, to yigafaraya, de da da maha ne ka brapusti fada. Doludulutama, ka bezon tarkumbongo, kumbongo mba da kakarachi, nevo yuno konkonda cha shukuru, toh, o shukurma, medeninda kulubala, ka fada ngo tohaser silmisli, kayo no liab ke dagbanle, toh, o ikuptilagi, fada ikuptilag, mku yali 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 yali, katufoke no liab kama, kumbongo karechi ko nyalmaye, no nabeyal demji, ka fada langba ay, unkukbaba, unkukbaba. Ka kumbongo karechi te ne ay, no na kulby yal demji, desaha ka sgrati tesilmin doongo, ka silmin doongo malgetuhosoro, kayo na ah, no kukyali etuhashe ngama zaha, dumala oliab kumab, desaha kumbongo karechi we we, ah, teduma patama ma, zo mia. Toh, eh, deso de, diyala ngo kankuyen yalay, yede, yelman lejimwama ne, na baprasanarna antemana, ka mbakalan gama zona, yaru zoro, iptilagi, bencha kamdun chang, karifiyala, katamkan le zoro, tenzan pagwama tin, eh, tebama, ama, den tebe chang de de, desaha, mangbachi rumbumba la, eh, kandian zantie kayel ne de, yelmalali te, na karabyan, ka karachi karabyan, afakarabyan, toh, ka bepi ma, nenli jimati ma, toh, ka inkulehi le kartungala kaman dena nyangma, ama nukpahma, karachi shabambi te nanema, nafanema, mnti ha, nyenyu ibara, ka bangni insani nyanga, ka jimachangbiyala ngaa, nsaabu ma bijixale na pahla nyukulehi, guapke nenu sa, nenpo ne sa, nie ka, nivo shabanjia ma, isom ma, jimani changbiyala, deszon saya, nenli jimo toondana. So, Mr. DJ, thank you very much, I humbly accept to chair this function, thank you. The DJ has vanished.
Oh, okay.
All right, selaka tepahnu pamsantesi, Sachi, tenama ngo nyesho, eh, lana, eh, Sachi, tepaya, na na abarkana, but um, let me correct this. In Yavu, Shena is our special guest of honor, let me correct this, I said he is gonna be the chairman, but of course, from the itinerary here, he is gonna be our special guest of honor. Deso, dogobama, eh, nama nukobe shell toondal, kamsaha, silmisli woka tokbalisama, badiko nyalshell kam, dejimofukumse biyolo nuney, depilo nun, kana go nuney, tokbalis silmisli makawula, mnti hadetukonyala tijinwama, danambala, deshotepaya, sorry about the earlier aroma, and I think we are gonna be moving on to the program, like I said earlier, on time is already fast pen, and we are gonna be very snappy on it. Next on the program lineup, we are gonna be introducing, um, our manager, and of course, he happens to be Mr. Simon Ali Jaranah, to come and give us an introduction to team representing the P U R C.
Thank you very much, good morning, um, let me quickly also sincerely apologize for the heat up, the technical heat up we had, um, the Bashina is a special guest of honor for this great occasion, and not the chairman for the occasion, thank you very much. On this note, let me quickly introduce the commissioners, uh, from P U R C, so in our midst this morning, we have Professor Anafu Ebenezah Bugri, he's the chairman of the technical committee and a board member of the Public Utilities Regulatory Commission, please a round of applause for him. Um, we also have in our midst, Mr. James Demetrus, he's also a board member, P U R C. I have, we also have in our midst, Manchiri Barichisu, eh, as a matter of fact, is a queen mother from the Gondja traditional area, and also a board member of the Public Utilities Regulatory Commission. Yekamye dismasunga. Then, um, we also have in our midst, Vida C Kurugu, eh, she's a, an external, eh, committee member of the Stakeholder and Communications Committee of the Public Utilities Regulatory Commission. In our midst also is Mr. Alex Bonney, he's also an external committee member, a member of the Stakeholder and Communications Committee of the Commission. We also have in our midst, Dr. Kobina Nyako Otu, he's also a board member and a rep of T U C on the board of P U R C. Then finally, uh, we also have in our midst, um, someone who is, who works with the president of the Republic of Ghana, as a matter of fact, she's a presidential staffer in the office of the president, that's number one. Then number two, is a board member of the Public Utilities Regulatory Commission. Then number three, she chairs the Stakeholder and Communications Committee of the Commission. We have in our midst, with a round of applause, I, I want you to kindly clap hands very well for our madam Nana Yar Jantua. A lot of you, at least, might have seen him on telly a number, a couple of times. On this note, we also have in our midst, some directors who are from the head office of the Commission, we have in our midst, Dr. Eric K Obote, Director Regional Operations, eh, regional, eh, research and corporate affairs. Mr. Obote, I think he's house doing something. Then we have Mr. Emmanuel Fiyati, Director Water, thank you very much. Then we have Mr. Wallys Dodu, our Director Finance and Administration. Then we have in our midst, Abakari Jabaru, our Director Regional Operations. Then we also have Dr. RT Aziz, a Deputy Director Research and Corporate Affairs. Aziz, thank you very much. Mr. DJ, you can continue with the rest of the introduction.
All right, very well, thank you so much, Mr. Simon Ali. All right, and, um, we are gonna be continuing with, um, introduction of our special personalities in our midst here, and from Ghana Water Limited Head Office, we have Mr. Seth Eric Atiapa, Chief Manager X D, ladies and gentlemen, a very big round of applause for him, and of course, N G N W Nui Odoy, Manager Operations, and of course, Engineer Daniel Darko, Head Office Operations, and of course, Mr. Suliman Bwedu, Head Office, and of course, supported by original team here, Stephen Amir Hemes, Regional Chief, eh, Manager, and of course, Alhaji Alhassan Baba Abu Bakar, Regional Distributing Manager, also here with us is Mohammed Basiru, Regional Commercial Manager, and of course, Munthaka Ibrahim, Regional Finance Manager, and of course, we also have Sulaimana Alhassan, Regional Water Quality Manager, and of course, Favor Francisco, H R Manager, and then Dan Haruna, Regional P R O, and of course, Akolberry Stanley, District Manager, Northeast Region.
Eh, in fact, because we didn't start early, I, I am going to respectfully suggest that, eh, us and when the utilities come to do the presentation, they will just introduce a few of their staff, and then we can make progress. Thank you very much, you can continue with the rest.
All right, very well, so, um, I was still on the introductions, maybe we need to leave some, so that when the teams come, they would, um, continue with the introduction, thank you so much. All right, then, let's move on to, I mean, individuals and groups that are representing here, and wama de samson entangleke dagban le biyalfu, I think takankupi le zor sama, tenan nyala bambiki, katembetumbe na, je shabetou kana katembetumbe na, tepaya na na abarkana, and of course, in yapsanarna, o nyala wontemtumbe na, denkanyab, tama tepaya na na abarkana, and of course, in yapda kama, o nyala denkarnu balshoko, temtumbe na kabatetetijin wama, netepaya, na ne yosamfialay, and of course, in yaptoana, representing in yaptoana, na angafara, ngo nyetow, um, satangna, and of course, kanyab sabana, antepa inyab malzana, kabapaha ozoho, kababetijin wama, netepaya, lalanyala kanyablamashina, kaman ne po nyalma, opanyala wontemtumbe na kabatetetijin wama apuni, and of course, in yabbanfunkbala na, opatumbe yalay, bambi etijin wama apuni, tepaya, tenanema, nanang daboniya, kakana nebatajin katijin wama, ajinman na na abarkana. Thank you so much for coming, and of course, Tamilly associations, individuals, and of course, groups, kabesa habanang pangmanga, kabetijin wama apuni, headdresses, and of course, benyala bambiti, lala headdresses wama, ne putishasma, all right, tepaya, thank you so much, and of course, dressmakers, ne netka, ne G P R T U, basahanyala bambiki, tilabna, tenlanang lala, um, introductions wama, kapu kapabapam, bantounang daboniya, kabetijin wama apuni ma. All right, next on the program lineup ma, we are just going straight on to next on the program lineup, and we are welcoming, um, Dr. Kobina Nyako Otu, the commissioner, P U R C, to come and give us, um, his own speech. Selaka tepahnu pamsantali, Dr. Kobina Nyako Otu, kokana tezangozelo kame nyashale, anzanteti.
Thank you, Mr. M C. Madam Chairperson, Honorable Nana Yar Achemphim Jantua. Our special guest of honor, Shina, and registrar of the Tamil Technical University. Sheena and Registrar of the Tamil Technical University, Alaji Yakubu Idrusu. Dapema Na, Gupe Na, Shugu Na. Bavum Na, revered traditional leaders of the Northern and Savannah regions. Honored representatives of the Metropolitan Municipal and District Assemblies. Members of our investees and tertiary institutions. Esteemed leaders of market associations, farmer groups, civil society organizations and members of the media, colleague commissioners and officials of the utility companies. Ladies and gentlemen, it is with great pleasure that I welcome all of you to this important public hearing in the Northern Region of Ghana. As you may already be aware, in the last one month, the P U R C has been on a tour of the country. And this is our eighth stop. This tour relate to what we call public hearing in relation to the multi-year tariff adjustment that the Commission is about to do. The multi-year tariff adjustment will span the period 2025 to 2030. Now, in this period, the utility companies have submitted to the P U R C proposals for tariff adjustment. And by law, when they do that, we come to the public, to consumers and to all groups. And we allow you to make your input before the Commission decides on what to do with the proposals. So today, we are in the Northern Region combining both the Northern Region proper and Savannah Region. And you have a unique opportunity to interact directly with the utility companies. They will be making presentations right after the chairperson has spoken. And in this presentation, they will explain many things to you. But please, you are now free to interrogate the things they explain, ask questions and make suggestions. So, the reason for being here is simple. As the utility companies explain their tariff proposals, we are giving you the opportunity to interrogate and make suggestions and make sure that the commissioners here in seated will listen and make input on the basis of the suggestions that you are going to make. I encourage all participants to engage actively in the public hearing. Listen attentively as the utility companies make their presentations. And when given the opportunity, share your concerns, experiences and suggestions. Our experience from the other regions shows that when the utility companies are talking about tariff adjustment eh, the public will be talking about complaints. This is not a forum for complaints. It's a forum where you must talk about the tariff that they are proposing. So please, if you have complaints, the P U R C has a unit for receiving your complaint. This time, we want you to talk directly to the proposals by the Commission, by the utility companies. Together through dialogue, understanding and mutual respect, we can shape the utility sector that reflects our collective aspirations and resilience of the people of the Northern and Savannah regions. I thank you once again for coming. And you are free to make all the suggestions and to ask all the questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, I think we can do better with a round of applause again for Dr. Koppina Nyako Otu. All right. We are grateful. And next on the program lineup, and of course, I'm a fire. I'm a fire. I'm a fire. I mean, I'm a fire. 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 So, we're sorry, I'm a fire. 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 I'm a fire.
Very well. The Paya, I think that is good to go now. And please, our technicians on duty, please save us this day, we beg of you. All right, once again, we apologize for that short break and of course, like we explained earlier, it was one or two technical problems. The technicians are still making sure that they're gonna fix it and will have a stable power to have a successful program. All right, ladies and gentlemen, once again, on the program lineup, we are introducing Honorable Nanyar Gentua Chairperson Stakeholder Committee, P U R C, to come and give us their own speech. Ladies and gentlemen, with a very big round of applause, let's welcome Honorable Nanyar Gentua, Chairperson Stakeholder Committee, P U R C.
Good morning, everybody. Netco, good morning. Netco, are you here? And you saw what's happened? I hope it's a one-off thing and that it's not consistent. Traditional leaders, all other protocols observed. I'm here to open the program. We are sorry for the late start. This event that we have been today is meant for the utilities to send their proposal to Netco Ghana Water to tell you about the tariffs they need to enable them to work effectively from 2025 to 2030. They are going to tell you the investment that they need. They were given a tariff in 2022. They are going to tell you what they've used the tariff for till today. They are going to tell you the investment that they need to enable them work effectively and render to you the good quality of service that you need. The P U R C has a responsibility to ensure the financial viability of the utility service provider whilst at the same time ensuring that the consumer has good service. Within the power of Act 538, the P U R C will do everything possible to ensure that as you pay your tariffs, as you pay your money for your electricity, your bills, you ensure that you get the right kind of service. And this, what you are doing today is law. It is steeped in law. The laws that govern the P U R C say that we should create the opportunity for the utilities to speak to the consumer when there's a proposed tariff increase. And that is why we are here. You want to say categorically that everything that will be before you today has not been approved by the P U R C. This is what the utility is envisaging, that when you pay that tariff, they'll be able to work effectively. They'll be able to work without jumsoh. They'll be able to work without letting your lights go off. They'll be able to work so that you don't have any problem with your service. And so that is why we are here today. As we start, I also enjoy the utilities, Netco. Please reach out to your consumers. Open the gates for them to be able to interact effectively with you. Make your doors open to the consumer so that whenever they have a problem, they'll be able to come and tell you what their problem are. So today, as we start, the program is opened and now I call on the utilities to do their presentation to the audience. You can ask your questions after the presentation. Please, let's have a lot of patience and let's ask our questions. Especially, let's ask questions on what they are presenting to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Honorable Nanyar Gentua. Ladies and gentlemen, I think we can do better with that round of applause. I mean, let's do that again. And of course, they can make sure that the consumer has the right and of course, is served well. All right, so ladies and gentlemen, like I said earlier on, we are just rolling on the program and the next on. All right, so the next to come up on the stage to give us the presentation is Gridco and of course, the team would come upstage and give us a presentation. Ladies and gentlemen, once again, with another big round of applause.
Thank you, good morning. Chairman of the Stakeholder Commission, Special Guest of Anna Sheena, Registrar of Tamale Technical University. Traditional leaders gathered in here, standing on all protocols observed. Once again, good morning. So I am from Gridco Ghana Grid Company Limited. On behalf of the Chief Executive, we, the team here, are here to present Gridco's tariff proposal to the people of the savanna and northern regions of Ghana. So together, we have our Engineer George Aduni. He's the Area Manager for Tamale. He's here with me. I also have, we also have here our Principal Electricity Market Analyst, Madame Ivy Abe. We also have our Engineer Nelson, our Chief Principal Engineer in the Tamale area. We also have our Senior Communications Officer, Madame Celestine Asigri, who is also here with us. And my name is Linda Ba, the Manager Market Operations with Gridco. So this morning, we are here to present to you our proposal which we have submitted to the P U R C for the period 2022.
Please keep it very short, very, very short, because we need to finish early.
So this is the outline of our presentation. Okay. So we'll tell you the rationale and the pending our tariff proposal and then the critical investment that we seek to make during this period to provide the needed transmission capacity. We'll tell you what we have done in brief with the last tariff that we had in 2022, our key assumptions, and then we will just mention the tariff and the revenue that we require to do the business. So just to give a little background, in the electricity supply chain, this is the flow. So as you can see, there is fuel that is used for generation and after generation, Gridco comes in as a transmission utility. So what we do is to evacuate the power that has been generated by the various generators using the various kinds of fuel we have available in Ghana. And then Gridco uses the system, a network of transmission lines and transformers and operating systems that we have put in place to transmit this energy that has been generated to bulk supply points. And at this bulk supply point, we have entities like our brothers in Netco who takes this bulk power and distributes to all end users. Also, at some bulk supply points, we have big industries who consume this power in bulk. So Gridco has put in place this network, which we are calling the National Interconnected Transmission System, which Gridco operates. So we operate this network, we maintain this network and this enables us to facilitate the trading between the generators and the bulk users, which I have mentioned. So in operating this network, that is why we are here. So we operate the system, we maintain and we facilitate the trading of bulk electricity generation. To do this job, we have put in place an infrastructure all over the country, from south to north, east to west. And this infrastructure is what we use to transmit the power to the bulk users. So why we are here, why we have submitted a proposal is that with, from this year till the year 2030, the current infrastructure we are using is not enough to provide the transmission capacity that will enable us meet Ghana's demand. And if you look at our projections, we realize that from this year, year on, year on, up to 2030, our demand in the country is increasing at about 8% per annum. So we need to invest in the infrastructure, improve the infrastructure and expand so that we can be able to meet the demand at the quality that is expected of us by the P U R C. So we have submitted our planned investments to the P U R C to enable us to expand the network. Now, if we keep the infrastructure as it is today, we realize that there are so many bottlenecks which present very dire and poor voltages on our network, especially in the evening where a lot of us are consuming electricity, which we are calling the peak periods of Ghana. So these two maps tell us the state of the transmission grid during the times that we are consuming less electricity, which is during the mornings and the afternoons. But getting to the evening on the far right, you realize that the system is very stressed. That is where we have poor voltages because the infrastructure is overstressed. So we need this planned investment to expand. Otherwise, we will be faced with losses, we will be faced with poor voltages. And this poor voltages occurs, that is why sometimes when you put on your refrigerator, it's not working, your light is not coming on, you are not able to use your fan and air conditioning because of the poor voltages that we realize of it. So Gridco is seeking to invest in the network so that we can do away with these bottlenecks in the system. So in our proposal, we have submitted to the P U R C a request for about 1 billion US dollars to put in place various infrastructure for the network. Another reason why we are here seeking for revenue is to enable us to maintain the infrastructure. As you know, these are machines, these are instruments, these are equipments that need to be constantly maintained. We do a lot of preventive maintenance because we want to as much as possible avoid downtimes. So we keep ourselves in readiness, maintaining our networks. And then if, which we don't envisage that to happen a lot, but when there is an outage as a result of a fault, we are always in ready to correct the fault and fix the network to ensure continual supply at the quality that is requested. So we need to maintain the network and as you know, the transmission line passes through most of our forests in the country. Because definitely, even the very few ones that are in the cities, they cause some inconvenience. So most of our lines are running through the forest and we need to constantly maintain the vegetation, clear the vegetation so that they don't cause outages on our system. So increased maintenance cost, we buy equipment, we buy a lot of things and most of our equipment are not manufactured here. And that is why as a utility, we need a revenue to be able to provide the service that is required. Unfortunately, other human activities are also hampering our work, causing us to have to invest more in maintaining our equipment and our infrastructure. Also, as we invest in this company, as we generate funds, we go outside to borrow. So if you are going to borrow, if you need financing to finance your investments without a cost reflective tariff, you will not get good financiers to support your business. So this tariff will enable us, get the needed tariff to be able to attract investment into the transmission business. Now, these are some of the projects that we have presented to the P U R C. There are about 15 of them. So in this period, we seek to expand our transmission capacity, our transformers in our various substations. And in this part of the country, we are going to put in place about six transformers in the Addubili Yendi area so that we can expand the transformation in the region to improve the supply. The other projects are listed in here. We are also seeking to put in place a new 330 K Tambo Addubili Transmission Line and various other projects that we have submitted to the P U R C. In the past, in the last tariff review process, which is in 2022, we were given some tariff by the P U R C. And this is what we have done. We have increased the transformer capacity at various substations in the south as well as up here in the north at the Nyagna Substation. Also, our main system control center, where we ensure that generation is always enough to meet demand. There is always a balance in the system. We have expanded it because the network keeps expanding. Looking at the years ahead, we are seeing that the energy to be transmitted to the bulk users is increasing year on, year on. And by 2020, Ghana is going to consume about 41 gigawatts of electricity. And this is the basis for our request to P U R C. And we have to maintain our system so that we can meet the threshold, the P U R C loss threshold. But if you look over the years, averagely, we are doing about 4.3 percentage of transmission losses, which is just a little over the 4.1 threshold that is mandated by law. This is how much we need for our various operations. So if you can see, we have in 2025, in this year, the amount of money that Gridco is requesting for to be able to do the business for this year is about 3 billion Ghana cedis, increasing to about 5 billion in 2030. And on the average of for these five years, Gridco is requesting for a tariff of 12.97% for this year, which is about 13% over the period of five years. And as you can see with this tariff, if we are given this tariff in this year, over the years, there is going to be a almost negligible increase in the revenue that will be required to do our business. So Honorable Chairman, our Special Guest, and everyone seated here, Gridco is requesting that for each kilowatt hour of energy we transmit, we are requesting that we be paid an amount of 12.97 Ghana pesos to be enabled us to provide the transmission capacity to meet Ghana's demand in the next five years, which is about 77% increase in the current price. Thank you very much.
All right, very well. Ladies and gentlemen, once again, let's give a very big round of applause. Madame Linda Ba giving us a presentation representing Gridco. Next, to come upstage and give her the presentation and of course, coming from Netco. So Netco, the stage is yours now to come and give us your presentation. Ladies and gentlemen, as we welcome the rep from Netco, let's give him a round of applause. Let it be louder, please.
Okay. Madame Chairperson, Honorable Nanyar Gentua, and the Registrar of Tatoo, Sheena. And to all the chiefs present, the various stakeholders, especially to those on the table, may I say Ammaraba? And to the chiefs, let me say Antri because it's afternoon. I would like to speak both English and Dagmanli and I would like to do it fast because of time. So I'm here to represent Netco and I have my colleagues here with me and I would like to introduce them to you all. So we have the Director of Commercial Operations. And he is in the person of Hashimi Idrissu. We have the Director of Services, Mr. Ajedya. We have the gentleman responsible for billing, Isaac Bwachi. We have the Area Manager who's you should know very well, Dauda. And my colleagues are many, I cannot introduce all of them. So I'm here with them to do justice to this presentation. Okay, so. Okay, but.
That's the mag one two, all right.
Okay, thank you. Yes, so this is an internal problem. This is not Netco. I think they have a wiring problem, so you can see that. Okay. So we go straight to the presentation. What is happening? Okay, Netco. I will be very brief because I have seen that we keep saying Netco, V R A, Netco, V R A. So who is Netco and who is V R A? Okay. Netco started as a department, were fully owned by V R A. So we came out of V R A. So in 1983, in fact, we were V R A and that's why you were hearing V R A and all our symbols had V R A logo on it. And we moved to becoming a company registered in 1997. We started operating as a company called Netco in 2012 and today, we have about 1.2 million customers. So we are Netco. Yes, and if you can see from the map, this is the map of Ghana. And the red portion is where we operate. We are found in eight regions to test of Ghana. We have access rate of about 75% and we distribute just 10% of the energy generator. So let me try to say this in Dagmanli. In Dagmanli. So. I li, no lomboma, Ghana zat, tumala nintepesan asedwic, ama netoma, 75. The way a no ma, nekama, tina ma tansy, dina kalati. So titu managasi apam, neti vone lomboma, inle chatang sechale dina kalati ma. So la ma zo, tum ware, lare, neti to da machine a no ma. So, la, ma, so, to, boy, eh, la, eh, let, it, oh, da, machine, ah, no, ma, um, good, like, ma, in, chang, no, money. Okay, so, the rationale behind our tariff. We have some key drivers that has influenced the need to come to you, the public, and also to our regulators for tariff increments. One of them is our cost of operations. We have a cost of operations that is high. And the reason is because of the coverage. You agree with me that it will take more money to cover people who are spaced than to cover people who are living together. Another reason is the nature of the customers we have in our operational area. We have a lot of customers who are lifelines. And their electricity price is subsidized. And because of that, it is difficult to recover the cost of operations through it. Forty percent of the customers in our operational areas are considered as lifelines. And another reason is a high investment requirement. There's a need to invest heavily in the distribution infrastructure. We have seen that the access rate in Netco is behind the national average, seventy-five percent. What it means is that moving forward, we have to extend electricity, and we have to build infrastructure to catch up. And it requires investment. So these are the key rationale or the key drivers that is influencing our request for tariff increment. So, yeah, any, so, I think, can, ah, ma, till, eh, come, na, na, the, the, ah, Lisa, ma. Uh, in, so, yeah, any, uh, no, long, bro, far, come, ah, to, boy, la, the, power, bo. So, be, cha, didn't cha, to, boy, the, power, ma, yeah, like, ah, ma. To, to, ma, ma, to, to, ma. The, 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 boy, la, eh, to, boy, la, eh, to, to. Uh, the, the, poor, ma, the, gas, ma. The, to, the, to, pass, so, come, les, ah, no, long, bro, ma, um, pa, boy, yeah. Cat, oh, um, boy, le, cha. So, la, ma, so, ma, the, to, ne, the, the, la, la, eh, I, call, he, I, ke, da, eh, na, ti, um, co, ah, ni, ma. Can, they, wo, le, um, gas, uh, in, just, uh, for, lo. Do, co, have, no, la, so, ti, ga, eh. Boy, 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 busy, uh, no, yeah, yeah, kay, yeah, and, good, to, co, ah, to, go, za. Then, Jim, eh, eh, da, ka, le, ba, cha, cha, de, ka, ba, mo, to, and, da, pa, ma, no, de, ne, cha, to, co, ah, to, go, za. So, the, cha, um, ka, te, te, to, ma, ka, le, um, dear, la, eh, so, ka, te, le, boy, eh. Ne, de, pa, di, ah, ma. Ah, me, he, he, yeah, yeah, any, ti, yeah, long, ma, te, bo, the, no, long, bro, ma, te, di, ah, ni, ah, eh, I, yeah, think, se, pa, na, di, ah, na, ka, bo. So, um, ka, bo, ma, ti, ah, zan, bo, ma, cha, no, ma, di, ah, Jim, eh, eh, the, machine, ah, no, ma, cha, do, um, be, a, tans, ma, no, ah, ka, le, pa, li, ah. Ka, bo, ma, ka, to, chang, ha, le, um, pa, tans, ma, ah. So, la, ma, so, ka, le, eh, ka, na, ki, oh, oh, so, oh. Let, he, so, yeah, uh, uh, te, no, long, bro, far, come, ah, ka, te, pa, le, di, ah. Okay, so, in 2022, we came to you to request for tariff increment, which you did. We would like to go through some of the things we have done with the increment that you gave us. We have constructed the Lamashagou Primary Substation. In fact, they are even two in one. We have the Lamashagou Primary Substation and the Switching Station. As we speak, I think this auditorium UDS is currently hooked onto the new substation that has just been finished in August. We have upgraded some undersized conductors to increase the capacity and the quality of supply that we give to customers across our operational areas. We have bought some distribution materials, poles, transformers, meters, uh, conductors. We have also procured meters and installed in Tamaré, and I think we are all aware of this. We have built about eleven customer service centers. And if you go to Yendi, you will see one of them, a new office to accommodate the customer and give the customer a better service. We have procured capacitor banks to improve the quality of service. We have installed meters. We have upgraded our IT systems by building a data center and a disaster recovery center. So, here, any, uh, two thousand, two, ma, trak, come, na. And, he, uh, so, yeah, any, pan, uh, 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 no, long, bro, far, come, ah, cat, it, oh, uh, zan, le, to, ma. To, boy, let, he, yeah, 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 in, in, the, yeah, 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 pa, la, but, zan, le, to. To, yeah, the, substation, pa, li. So, I, I, he, come, oh, in, cha, eh, um, poor, eh. I, yeah, pa, go, eh, ah, no, dear, go, ah, yeah, the, substation, pa, li. To, boy, the, Lamashagou Substation, forty, eh, yeah, la, substation, ma, di, ah, pa, la. Uh, bro, ma, yeah. Ka, le, uh, yeah, te, di, yeah, no, cha, ka, to, to, you, to, ma, te, yeah. So, then, cat, eh, me, eh, cat, eh, way, ah, no, ma, the, port, port, me. So, way, ah, no, ma, he, port, port, ah, to, to, uh, zan, eh, bro, cha, eh, di, yeah, Jim, ah, to, to, Gil, ah. So, I, yeah, no, no, ah, you, no, ah, ta, eh, para, so, I, yeah, ka, pa, li. So, to, to, the, way, ah, no, ma, pam, te, ta, ta, la, um, cause, ah, way, ah, ka, ra, no, de, ne. Ka, da, transformers, in, the, mi, ta, no, ma, in, the, po, lo, no, ma. Uh, mi, ta, no, ma, ta, ti, ah, me, yeah, la, the, te, 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 me, yeah, 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 te, 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 ma, le, ka, na, yeah, uh, te, uh, te, ma, le, ta, la, la, ka, na, co, in, te, di, ah, fa, ne. Ka, ka, me, eh, service center, I, cha, yeah, the, so, office, pa, li, to, yeah, the, office, pa, li, so, so, I, can, ah, the, to, ne, I, can, ah, na, te, w, long, bro, ma.
Over the next five years. And what it means is that when we get this tariff improvement, we can assure you that we will have an improved quality of service, we have an improved reliability, we have improved customer service, sorry, it was a mistake. Improved customer service, reduce losses and at the end of the day, customer satisfaction will increase. So these are the details of our tariff proposal. I believe that you cannot see, but it's just a breakdown of what goes into our thirty-one percent that we are asking for. So in conclusion, we are recommending and appealing that Netco's tariff proposal of thirty-one percent increment over the next five years be accepted so that we can perform our role as a utility and provide better service to the people in the northern part of Ghana. So Tiamne, eh 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 conclusion like, conclusion. Ti, ti boan viya kama, ti, di pa, fa, fa, ma, ipai. Ti, pontriyan olam baomashama, de, 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 improving. Ka, lahtama, ka le, inirvenyela, ka tomaletum, de tumboartumisale. To, pa ya, thank you very much.
Alright, umbufanga. Eh, let's give a very round of applause, Mohamed Tampouri is the name. Jaleka, katepahnu, pamzantam, Mr. Mohamed Tampouri. For the representation, shaloon, no, toma. And of course, to poyal neji, ma, nyala, Ghana, bukumsa bamali, eh, Ghana, tumadu, demal, fukumses, and then, de, temin, olam baom, na, Ghana Water Limited, nama. The pohanie, yurutabsham. And of course, the program is for the northern region and the savanna region. And we are most grateful that our brothers are still coming from eh, the savanna region that are here with us and we appreciate it. And from the presentation, I think it is very simple, from Netco, that they need money to make an agreement of their facilities and of course, the services that they are renting to us. And they are telling us or explaining to us the amount of money they need and of course, as to what papers they are going to be using their money for. And that was simple, the presentation. Alright, so we are going to be having the next presentation. And we are inviting a rep from the Ghana Water Limited to come and give us the presentation for Ghana Water Company Limited. Jaleka, nu ma, luvenyalan ga, Ghana Water Company, banguna, oh, no, bandenma, the way, but, ta ya, nu, pamzantaba, banguna, the way, lahtemini, va di de. Mister Chairman, kindly permit me to acknowledge and appreciate the presence of the Sheena Alaji Yakubu Idrissu, who is also the registrar of the Tamale Technical Institute and also all traditional leaders here present. Also acknowledge the presence of Honorable Naya Jantua, Chairperson, Stakeholder Community PRC. Ladies and gentlemen, all utilities here present, our protocol is observed. I'm happy to present to you the proposal of Ghana Water for the major tariff review twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty. So like my colleagues will tell you a bit about Ghana Water and then all that we have done with the monies we received from you from the year twenty twenty-two. Then why we are coming again for another tariff? Some plans we have for you and then how much it will take for us to implement those plans. So first of all, let me say that Ghana Water is a special utility, not like the electricity sector where you have generation, transmission and distribution. Ghana Water Company stands for all these three. And we are almost at every urban area. You see Ghana Water over there, we have eighty-six active headworks or systems, we call them, where we produce water. And we have about one hundred and three operation districts. It's a very big company, yearly producing about three hundred and twenty million cubic meters of water. Of course, Ghana Water is in the northern region. Over here, you see, we are everywhere here plus oversight responsibility at Salaga. We have three nama, urban systems. So we are in Dalon, Yendi and also Salaga. We have seven operation districts, Tamale, Tamale East, West. And then eh, we produce about eleven point two million cubic meters of water. So northeast, Tamale West, Tamale Southwest, Dalon, Yendi, as I said. So we are covering almost everywhere of the northern region that is urban. Now what have we done with all the money that we received from you? Eh, I've broken them into production improvement and distribution improvement. So when we say production improvement, we are talking of everything that is related to treatment, producing the water, then the distribution is getting the water to you. So first of all, you will see that before twenty twenty-two, we have this old starter which consumes a lot of power. Now we replaced it to a sub-starter that is new and it has helped us with the management of our energy consumption. It cost us two point four million Ghana cedis and this was installed at the Dalon Headworks. We also installed or refurbished three normal step-down transformers also at Dalon. This is almost six million Ghana cedis. This we were able to do from the monies we received from you as payment of your water bills. And you can see how beautiful they look. We also have what we call automatic voltage regulators. Before this, sometimes the plant will be available, will have water. But the quality of power coming will not enable us to switch on our equipment. We brought in the AVRs, they are able to control the voltage and we are able to produce water whenever there is water and whenever there is light. We constructed three hundred and twenty-four cubic meters a day of what we call a packet plant at Damanggo. So sometimes when the conventional plant is unable to reach certain areas, we are able to put a special plant there, we call packet plant. And this we did at seventeen point four million Ghana cedis. And this was just the money you gave to us. So Damanggo, very soon you will see water reaching everybody through this plant. Thank you so much, thank you so much. We have installed bug beaters almost everywhere in the central region where we have our production works. And this is almost six hundred thousand Ghana cedis. For us, you see that everything we say, we show you the pictures, evidence so that you don't doubt. Installed valves, valves help us to isolate, sometimes to manage best to ration water and to make sure supply is good. We have installed valves at various locations, we have various valves in the northern region. And this we did with six million Ghana cedis. I want to stress again that we, Ghana Water, get money from only you. Therefore, everything we, we say we have done, it is your money and we have used it judiciously. Okay, some other improvements works we have done. We installed four normal sub-states at the low leaf pump house at Dalon Headworks. The picture is now here, here. And also two normal low leaf pumps at Yendi. Yendi, we have installed two normal new pumps. Apart from all that we have done at production and transmission, we have also moved into the distribution network. And in summary, we have completed sixty-one kilometers of pipeline, sixty-one kilometers. You can imagine how long sixty-one kilometers is. And this we did it at the cost of twenty-one point three million Ghana cedis, twenty-one point three million Ghana cedis. Now the old ones, the AC lines, that give way so often. We have also replaced ten kilometers of that, that we did with two point seven million Ghana cedis. And extensions that are going on, that you will soon see some in your communities, twenty kilometers, costing almost ten million Ghana cedis, ten million Ghana cedis. Let's see the communities that will benefit from this. Sonya Yili, Pampe Koku, Di Sonya Yili. Please pardon my, my, my pronunciation. By, by, by Amni, Kamvili, Tunayili, Pavvo, Evitin, Bwawa and East Envaros, UDS Residential Areas, Kalariga and East Envaros, Fo, Kapohini, Changli, Changli. So you can see that everywhere these extensions are coming. And you can imagine how supply will be when it is completed. And then of course, because we want to show you evidence, these are pictures of extensions we are doing. Some other works, we install seven hundred mm diameter pipeline at KY. You can see the pictures over there. That is it. Sometimes. Okay. So some more improvement works. So apart from the distribution lines, we also realized that we need to control supply within the communities. We had three very important tanks that were in a very bad state that they cannot hold water so that we supply you when there is power off or something like that. So we rehabilitated three number of them, one at Kaladan. This cost us six hundred and three thousand US dollars. In Ghana cities, nine point one million Ghana cities, just the Kalagan tank. When you come to Bagabaga, we used seven hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars. If I come home to Ghana cities, it is twelve million Ghana cedis, twelve million Ghana cedis. And then finally, the one at Salaga. We rehabilitated or refurbished it with nine point one million Ghana cedis. Here, all in the northern region, or let me say, yeah, northern region. So you can imagine the money we make, sometimes our water bills, forty-five cedis, eighty cedis, one twenty cedis. And we are able to refurbish just three tanks almost at thirty million Ghana cedis. This is what Ghana Water is doing to ensure that you get water today, tomorrow and always. These are the tanks, the, this is the Kaladan one. How it was rusted, this is the Bagabaga one. You can see the inside, the left one, very rusted after the refurbishment, the middle one. And the right hand side, the left, extreme right, that is how beautiful it's looking over there. And this is the Salaga tanks. We did all this with your money. Some other projects we are doing and this is eh, facelift of water waste pay points. So before, after, at least where we are working, you will look a bit clean. When you come to pay your money, you should, you should feel at home. And in all, in all, we have completed six projects, one ongoing, so total of seven, just in the, just in the northern region. And this is costing two million US dollars plus eighty-five million Ghana cedis, plus eighty-five million Ghana cedis. If you convert two million US dollars, it's a lot of money, you know. And nationwide, nationwide, you can see what Ghana Water is doing. Overall, thirty-eight projects, thirty-two, twenty-two completed, eight ongoing, eight to be done, costing us four hundred million US dollars, four hundred million Ghana cedis, one point eight billion dollars and one point four billion euros. This is money Ghana Water is spending to ensure that we get potable water to our various homes. Now why have we come here? After spending all this money and we want to spend more, why are we before you? First of all, we thank you for the money you gave us, but what has happened to the money? In twenty twenty-two, when you gave us that money, we all know that when you have maybe a thousand Ghana cedis, you can get some money in dollars, appreciable amount in dollars. But over the years, the city depreciated. So anytime we collect your money in Ghana cities and we want to change it into dollars to buy the chemicals and buy the pumps, we don't get the same amount anymore. So then natural things are putting to the economy, affected us as well. The second thing is that in twenty twenty-two, when we came here, we're asking for about three hundred percent tariff increase. PRC, your concerns, your inputs, we all came to a conclusion that no, that is too much. So something was given to us and that is what we use to do business for the last three years. If you look at my table over here, we money in twenty twenty, okay, let me even come to twenty twenty-one, but that twenty twenty is gone. What I want to say is that in twenty twenty, we made a loss when we went to the market. After spending, buying chemicals, crediting some pipes, we generated only one point three mil billion, but we spent almost one point five billion. Meaning that we are owing some of our creditors almost hundred million Ghana cedis, we have not paid. Twenty twenty-one, same thing. We borrowed, we credited about one point six, we could generate only one point two. We are still owing four hundred and twenty-three million. Twenty twenty-two, we are owe, we, we are owing about six hundred and thirty-three. But thanks to all of you and PRC, around the end of the year, the tariffs were improved. So you can see that in twenty twenty-three, the loss came down. Twenty twenty-four, it started going up again. It means that we are not having enough money again because of the city depreciation and then maybe how expensive things have been on the market. That is the first reason why we have come to you. So you know that the money we are using for business is somehow depreciating. And of course, it's not good for utilities to get broke because every time we need money to replace a pump to maintain something, pipe for best. So whenever we are in that situation, we quickly come to you and the PRC to tell you or inform you of our situation. The second reason why we would need our tariffs to be improved is that you know the government many times does big, big infrastructure for us. The treatment plants cannot at that time or are not by that time paid by the tariff you give us. But currently, there is a new policy shift that we should try and incorporate the cost of these loans that the government get for us in building our treatment plants into the tariff. If that is so, then every year we have this to pay. Twenty twenty, we have four hundred and seventy-six million, twenty twenty-one, four hundred and forty-two and it continues in that order. In fact, if we are able to pay, it means that the government will get more room and leverage to borrow more money for us so that we can expand. These are big projects, treatment plants, we can expand everywhere in the northern sector who have potable water. So it's something that is, is in discussion. The third one is pollution. Our water bodies have been polluted so much that cost of treatment has become unbearable. Now, I, I want to tell you that the water that we treat your various homes, we pay obstruction fees for it. Now when we buy this water, you can see something like a basin over there, full one, we buy it. When we put it down or we start treating, you see that seventy percent of it is just sealed, sealed. Water we have bought, we have to throw away seventy percent, we get only thirty percent. So chemical cost, seventy percent of it is gone waste. Electricity cost, eh, thirty percent of it is gone, seventy percent of it is gone waste and only thirty percent comes to you. When this continues, you will not get enough water in your homes and sometimes it results to rationing. Water is light. Get light again. So let me show you. This is a video, but I'll skip it now. That, the line you are seeing there is just showing you how cost of treatment is going. So you see that from the beginning in two thousand and seven, cost of treatment was somehow cool, stable. Just look at twenty twenty-one up to twenty twenty-four, cost of treatment that high. Meaning that we are carrying more money and of course, it's about four times more. If you just look at the chart, about four times more what we used to in care in treating water for you. All because of what? People polluting the water bodies. So over here in the northern region, the pollution we are experiencing a lot is sand winning. And this is at Nawuni. Everybody is trying to catch sand and it's in the obstruction area. This make, it really, really disturbs the water, the, 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 the burdens of the, of the, of the water bodies. So every time the suit are not able to suspend for us to extract the upper part. Let's, let me show you more. See, this is, even they are using tranfa, tranfa and this is the water that is coming out. They will let it settle and take the eh, sand away. And this is really, really a problem for us. Now abilities. Normally, when we are designing treatment plants, we are looking at abilities around twenty, maximum hundred. Even here in the northern region, that you are doing or people are doing only sand winning, you can see that ability has moved from twenty-seven to two thousand four hundred and twenty-six. This is so many times, about hundred times, hundred more, almost hundred times. So how can a plant that is designed to treat water at ability of twenty-seven, not treat ability that is two thousand? See? And we want to say that it is not only in the northern region, but the impact of it is, is really, really severe on us. What you see over there are the internal parts of our pumps. And when there is salt in the water, salt wears off the, the internals. So I don't want to be very technical, but all these are parts that have worn out and we replace them so quickly just because of sand winning. Now here, this is other areas I will show you quickly because it's not happening here. But Nana eh, the, our, our, our chiefs, please, we first of all, thank you that Galam say it's not happening here, but make sure, I'll try for us so that it will not happen. But the sand winning, let's see how we can stop it. Thank you so much. So this is eh, Odaso. You can see how water that we are going to treat has become. Thousand. Thousand. When the plant design work with hundred, they have fifteen thousand. And you see that, that man, almost be shut down. This also, Odaso, let's, let's move on. This is Konongo, thousand two hundred and nineteen. This is eh, Nabwasi in the western region. Also, you can see how it's baby and namni, Naya, ate che. Of more than twenty-five meters have been reduced to less than three. Abi ba ine, sabi ba ine, ate che, ni ma, wado du infa. The dream, that somebody can just cross over it. Sealed, in which ever we, it's a big problem for us, sealed. So any activity that disturbs the river, the water body, so we have sealed or on any form of how money Nasi ate che? Pollutant. But then be ba wasi. Problem for us. Deep cry, okay. Eh, that all pictures of various forms of pollution. That is what is happening and that is why we have come. That the cost of treatment is so much for us that we have to see how we incorporate that cost into the tariff so that we, 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 we don't go out of, out of operation, out of business. We must continue to produce water for you. And the only thing we can do is to find a solution of buying chemicals, a solution of replacing the pumps, a solution of fixing the internal parts of the pump. Despite that, we are saying that we still have plans to continue with the works we are doing in the northern region. Because as pollution is increasing and going up, we also have to strategize. Here, we are building or constructing new plant water, water quality laboratories. And it is in most of the treatment plants. Here in the northern region, you are getting two, two number of these plants. It will cost Ghana Water almost ten million Ghana cedis to do it. One will be at Dalon, one will be at Yendi. So that we can test and test, ensure that despite the pollution, you still have clean water at your homes. The second thing we are going to do is to replace two number of our chlorinators at Dalon. They are not very efficient now. We will replace them, it will cost us two point three million. And then also, we will replace two normal Alan dosing pumps at Yendi, Dalon and Salaga. So six in all, about one point six million. Now the main extensions, when I mention the names, some communities are not yet saved. We don't have pipes there. So we are going to do twenty kilometers extra and that is almost ten million Ghana cedis. Replacement, the AC lines, we are not leaving them. We will continue to do twenty kilometers, we are going to replace. It is also like pipelines, so forty kilometers in all. Now customer service centers, we want to eh, lift the face up. Now, that Damango Water Treatment Plant is coming on board. It's coming on board and that will cost seventy million US dollars. And this is over, if I bring it to Ghana cities, maybe over eight hundred million Ghana cedis. So Damango Water Treatment Plant is coming on board. Then the government is sourcing funds to eh, finalize and build the Tamale Water Treatment Plant. So that is still on the drawing board and we are looking at it and customer smart meters. Now, we Ghana Water, we buy smart meters. And whenever you come for new service, we give it to you. So this will do with the tariffs. Or if P U R C, um, adjust our tariff upwards, we'll be able to do all these things. These are other things we'll do in other, other regions. So I'll not disturb you with that. Now, this is the interesting part. You see all that I told you? If we don't get money enough to replace the internals of our pumps, to buy new pumps, if we don't get money enough to buy chemicals, if we don't get money enough to pay Netco and ECG, they will switch off power to us. We ourselves, we will not be able to procure materials needed to what? To supply you. And it will be like we will temporarily be out of operation or business. Then some people will quickly come in. When they come in, they will sell that Guinness gallon, the Guinness gallon. If they sell it to you, it's thousand cubic, it's thousand liters, which is one cubic meter or two hundred and twenty gallons, there's no small gallons. They will sell it to, to you at two hundred and twenty Ghana cities. Two hundred and twenty Ghana cities when we are not able to provide you with our services. If you don't want Guinness gallon and you go to Kufua gallon, forty containers, which is also one cubic meters or two hundred and twenty small gallons, they will sell it to you at four hundred and forty Ghana cities. If you don't want Kufua gallon and you go to bottled water like I have, a cubic meter, which is two thousand bottles, they will sell it to you at six thousand Ghana cities. If you don't want bottled water and you go to Sache Water, they will sell the same amount of water to you at thousand Ghana cities. And they can only do that when you and I we allow by not letting Ghana Water operate. So what do you say? Ghana Water must operate. Is that it? Ghana Water must, please, let's all say it together. Ghana Water, so that we don't buy water at this cost. Now Ghana Water, when we are there, we will not charge you two hundred and twenty Ghana cities for one cubic meter. We will not charge you four hundred and forty. We will not charge you six thousand. We will not charge you thousand. We will not even charge you hundred cities. We will not even charge you thirty cities. Today, I'm saying that support me, support P U R C so that they give us only twenty cities. Twenty cities so that we operate and sell you the same water they will sell to you at this high cost. We will not bring it with a tanker that you don't know the source. It will not be in gallons, but in the comfort of your homes, you just turn off on the taps and our water is flowing at twenty point zero nine Ghana cities. And I believe that when we do that, we will be financially stable. Our business will be sustainable, reliable. It will give you good health and Ghana Water will be there for you and I. Thank you so much. God bless you.
All right, very well. Thank you so much for representing Ghana Water with that wonderful presentation. Ladies and gentlemen, a big round of applause for the rep representing Ghana Water. And of course, let me remind you again that it is the Northern Region and the Savannah Region Public hearing for the year twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty major tariff review. We are live on Facebook as well. And of course, we are also live on YouTube. And the page to log in and watch the event unfold is the P U R C Ghana Facebook page. And if you are watching us from there, I mean, you can share it for so many people to be part of this wonderful discussion. It is very simple, a wonderful explanation as to how our monies are used and of course, how much more they need from us so they can continue to provide us that wonderful service. All right. Honorable Nana Yajantua Chairperson, I think it is time we have the open public discussion. And again, let me remind you, if you have any complaint that you are directing it to the P U R C, they have created a complaint text outside there, you can go and lodge that complaint. For now, we are going to be giving the microphone to the public and you would have the chance to give us your opinion or your suggestion from the presentations we've heard so far. So it's going to be very simple. Make sure that your opinion, your suggestion is very, very brief. Make it very, very brief. So the microphone will be sent around. If you have an opinion or a question, you just raise your hand, we will create your awareness and then you do that. If the numbers are guaranteed, then we have no option than to form a queue. You stand here and then you give us your question or suggestion. There's a hand over there, far on my left. And maybe we just have to come forward. Okay, come forward. If you have an opinion or suggestion, just come forward. So that you just create a queue here and then we will pick in the suggestion and the opinions. So you make it very, very brief, please. Our time is already fast man and we don't need to spend more time here. All right, make it fast. Ali Li, first person, your name, where you are from? And then you tell us your suggestion or your question.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, my name is Abubakar Sadek Hussein, representing Nagra on this platform. With regards to any increment, but I'm of the view that any increment shouldn't go beyond fifty percent. Fifty percent. And then with water, we all know that water is a necessity. And so for me, I don't think that there should be any increment. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much. The next person, you mentioned your name and you tell us. So the officers are listening, we will give them time to come back and react to all opinion and suggestions that we heard from you. I'm very sure that Ghana Water, Gridco, Netco, you are all listening. We will give you the chance to come and react to suggestions, opinions or questions that we are getting from the public. All right, officer, don't wonder.
Thanks so much for your opportunity. Well, my question goes to all of them. Anytime and every time we are made to believe that the depreciation of the Ghana city is the cause of sometimes the tariff adjustment. Of late, the Ghana city has rescued itself from the captivity of the major currencies. At least for now, we had expected some stability. Why they oppose it? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much. The dollar is now struggling with the city. Why is still increment? All right, thank you so much. Next. Madam, ma- master. The buyer, thank you so much. I hope you are listening. Next, to ask a question or an opinion or suggestion. Your name, where you coming from?
Thank you very much.
All right.
My name is Mr. Okasha Umar. I'm a assembly member for Salamba Electric Era Tamale Me too. I have three short concerns, I will, I will very brief. The first one has to do with the proposed tariff increment. First of all, we all know that northern region and then the southern part, in terms of poverty level, we know the difference. We are still trying to catch up with the south. But my question is, I've been hearing that ECG charges less. That is their tariffs, cost per kilowatt hour is always lesser than Netco's charge. Initially, I didn't want to believe it and per my little research, it is true that ECG charges less than Netco. And what I gathered was that ECG charges per kilowatt, that is distribution service charge, nineteen pesos. As against Netco distribution service charge, which is fifty-six Ghana pesos. Why this discrepancy? It's very sad. So please, I want to urge P U R C, urge, um, our eminent chiefs and all stakeholders here to reject this proposed tariffs. Honorable Madame Jantua, please, northern region and Tamil Nadu to be precise, we cannot accept this increment. We were even planning that we were going to write a petition to the P U R C and then forward it to the president for them to reduce the tariffs. So why are you then trying to increase again? We are rejecting it and then we will never accept it. Failure to do so, we also take our, our, our next line of action. And then the last one has to do with recently, the energy sector levy one percent was introduced on petroleum products. And the claim was that Ghana owe three point five billion in the debts. And then you realize that this amount of money every year Ghana is going to realize five point seven billion Ghana cities. So for six years, we'll be able to offset this debt. My problem is that, honorable Jantua, please, instead of this increasing this tariff, the one Ghana city's energy level, why not, uh, wasn't divided? Fifty pesos will be used to cushion their consumer and the fifty peso will be used to pay it. So that is just my concept. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Like I said earlier on, please make your suggestion very brief. I hope Netco, Gridco and of course Ghana Water, you are taking notice of the questions. We will give you chance to react. Your name, where you are from and which of them you are directing your question to. All right. Well understood. Okay, next question. I don't know if, Ali Li. All right, your name, where you are coming from and of course, who your question is directed to. Please make it very brief and short, right?
Please, my name is Mohammed Huzeymat Tuntaya, a middle degree student at the University for Development Studies. Actually, my first question goes to, um, the one that did the presentation on, uh, from Tamale Water Company. Um, please, I wanted to ask, when you was doing the presentation, I saw, um, him listen, uh, the areas, young fellow, beating by you days, ever since I had admission, admission to you days, we've never seen any water flow. So I want to ask whether, um, they are working on it or it's yet to be done.
Very well. We are most grateful. Thank you so much. All right, next, your name, where you are coming from and where your question is directed to.
I'm Alas and Ibrahim, a student from University for Development Studies, planning student. My question goes to both the electric aspect, uh, and then the water company. I want to ask about illegal, listen, illegal connections about both the water and then electricity. Sometimes we do see, um, electric connections, um, when we talk of electricity, we we do see electric, uh, this illegal connections, both from the water aspect and then electric aspect. And the, the workers will be the same people who connected for the people. So we don't know the consequences of such situations for the workers because they will come and then clear their fist if it is life bill. They will clear illegally. Sometimes they will clear part of it, living some for the people. And then they will take some amount of money and then run away with it. And then they will not clear, uh, this thing as the way it's supposed to be. And then when we, I want to add this question to the water company. I don't know whether, uh, this in northern region can only, this in, it's only this in Dalon and Nawuni that can only supply northern region water or there is another river or stream that can supply northern region.
Questions well noted. All right. Ali Li, have we had the tenth person? Okay, last person. Your name, where you from and who you are directing your question or your suggestion to.
Okay, thank you so very much. My name is Abdul Latif Adam Cassi. I'm a student of the University for Development Studies. I'm reading public health in my junior year. My question goes to, um, the first woman and then the, um, the first gentleman that came to speak. Gridco and then Netco. They made mention of the fact that what is necessitating this increment of tariffs is the insufficient infrastructure. And I want to ask that when this is done, does it go to meet the excessive demand of electricity? Or it goes to expand the network of electricity to communities that do not have, um, access to electricity? And also that when I make payment of the tariffs and I do not get the offer that I'm promised, how do I channel my complaint so it gets addressed?
Well noted. Thank you so much. All right. Gridco, Netco, Ghana Water. Um, maybe if we can even spare, spare some time and energy, you can just stand here and address the question. So first, Gridco, right? So first, Gridco, right? Gridco, who is reacting to the questions on behalf of Gridco, all right, Madame Linda Na. So still we are reminded that if you have any question and opinion, you can join the queue and we'll give you the opportunity to do that in few minutes.
Okay, thank you, so the question on whether the expansion of the infrastructure will solve excess demand. In the industry, there's nothing like excess demand. What happens is that we make sure that supply is equal to demand. So the demand is what consumers are consuming. So what we need is what we operate dispatch generation to meet demand. So the demand, as I showed you in our key assumption, is increasing at a rate of eight percent annually. So this expansion of the infrastructure is just necessary to expand the infrastructure, to meet the increasing demand. All of us are contributing to the demand, in my house, industry, eh, commercial workers, everybody is contributing to this demand. So the infrastructure will improve to meet the demand year on and year on. And as we said, to improve, so to maintain the quality of transmission, that is why we need to open up the infrastructure. I'll just use an analogy, assuming we were all going through this entrance, at the same time, you can imagine what will happen. So if all of us have to go through this door at once, so it means that everybody is consuming, as I showed at the peak level. It means that the must, the door must be wider to enable us all pass through safely. And so that we can also meet the demand, so that is what is happening now, thank you.
Um, yes, a couple of questions to Netco, so we will be addressing them. Um, I think the first item is, um, Nagra Rep proposing a percentage increase, that we will not comment on. Um, P U R C would be handling that. Metres giving high bills. Um, meters giving high bills is something that might have to do with, if you have a forty meter or your wiring might have issues. Anybody who has concerns with a meter that you think is giving high bills, can you come to our office and report? We will take the meter and assess it in your presence to see if it has a problem. If the meter has a problem, we will change it. If not, we may advise you to look at your wire. Sometimes when they are faulty wiring, the ethin and other issues may be consuming power more than is necessary. Um, depreciation of the city, yes, truly, the city has been stable in recent times. So P U R C would give a tariff that is commensurate with the existing exchange rate. So whatever exchange rate that we have in Ghana and what the projection is, is what P U R C is going to use in arriving at the tariff that we have proposed. So in our tariff proposal, we have indicated the exchange rate that we are using. P U R C will look at it, if it is different from what the actual tariff, I mean, um, exchange rate is, they will replace it with the true exchange rate and give the correct tariff. Yes, lifeline tariff, um, the main problem we have as a company is that we have significant number of our customers being lifeline customers. It is true that in every country, there must be some room or provision for our poor. So the lifeline tariff bracket is aimed at cushioning the poor in the community in Ghana. However, because of the high number of lifeline customers that Netco has, it tends to have a very negative impact on our pricing. So we highlighted it for P U R C's consideration to see how the impact of that can be pushing on the company. Because if we don't do that, we may end up running huge losses that will not be able to continue doing our business. But we have made our case, P U R C and the government will look at our case and look at other factors in the country and decide on our proposal. Our proposal might be varied, might be scrapped or might be accepted. So we defer to P U R C to consider it and take the right decision. Yes, separate meters, um, ideally, I think maybe twenty-four customers in one house or on one meter, that is quite a high number. So apply for separate meter. Our officers will come, I mean, our officers will come to your house, assess your situation. If you meet the threshold of a separate meter, separate meter will be issued to you. Twenty-four households on one meter is quite high, so it is a legitimate concern. You bring the issue to our office and we will look into it. Yes, thirty-one percent, the thirty-one percent we showed as the percentage we are looking for is actually the average over the five years. If you look at our numbers, the final year, twenty thirty, we would be giving, we are proposing even a reduction. One of the years, two percent, three percent and five percent. This is on the condition that we are able to get what we are proposing for the current period, which is one hundred and seventy-four percent increase that we are asking for in the first year. But when you spread it over the five years, the average increase is thirty-one percent. Okay, the ECG, the truth is that the, the tariff that we charge, we and ECG is the same. So if you have any issue, it is rather the cost of power that we buy, that is different between us and ECG. But we charge the same to our customers. ECG buys from IPPs and other sources whilst we buy from only one source. That is where the difference is, but as far as tariffs that we charge is concerned, we and ECG, we charge the same tariff. So if you have any particular case, you may want to bring it up at Q U R C for redress. Yes, um, Netco workers involved in illegal connection. We are a human institution and we cannot say that our workers, some of them don't do the wrong thing. If you find any Netco worker, please be bold and get the details of the worker, report the person to us, we will actually give you a reward. We are looking for such people to take drastic action on them. So if anybody finds any Netco worker who is involved in illegal connection, please, you report the person to us, we will reward you handsomely.
You want to pay the investment? Okay, thank you. Um, the investment, I think the, my colleague from Gridco have answered that clearly. If you look at it, even in Tamale, at the outskirts of Tamale, new houses are being built. So the infrastructure reinforcement is not only to send electricity to rural areas, but also to reinforce the cities. Every day, myself and you, we add all new appliances, eh, we buy fridges, we buy air conditioners and we must get the infrastructure to feed that. So I think that is it. I would like to talk about the, the meter to the, my sister who spoke, she spoke in Dagmanli. Ah, mitama, arieya ni ti pahe farukuma. Um, eh, mitama, bitashal dung guruma, tikati yilebe. So, dikka, dikka ma yani, timitanama zaha yemenyale. Shalbu gur gashale. So, diyala, diyala ama la mita, karan na kaba, amitama, dugurme, dugurme yay. Yunkamna katlechante vele. Atams, dintona ka ayi mane, karmat problema, kama tikana kya ma, kala isma de kirshama, kaviala nyelo, yel mama. Dinen decha la isma kima, dintoma problema, kala, kala cha amitama gura, so dinen ka yaya, kala su yaya kama, amitama, dava yungwa dugurya, yunkamna office, katilethim so koleka hatilele. I think that's it.
All right, very well, now the time of Ghana Water, let me dead.
So thank you. The first gentleman said, water is a necessity, water is life. I was expecting that you say that then let's support water or Ghana water so we provide our life. But then he said, there shouldn't be any increment. My brother, water is life. When we come here to talk about tariff review, all that we are saying is that, um, the, the operations of the utility is challenged somehow with inadequate funds to provide you with the services. So we are pleading with you that look into the cost we are having. And then rather support us to, to generate revenue, to provide the services at that cost. We are not asking for profit, we are only saying that, look into the costs, look at what is making our costs go high. Help us to generate revenue, enough revenue to provide the services to you. We believe that when you think about this carefully, you will support us and ensure that we get money to continue to serve you. Because we have made it clear to you that the alternative of, of, of Ghana Water not being there is so expensive. The second thing too is from a lady who said, they will want to pay because water is good but they are not getting it. Where if you are not getting it because of coverage, that means that you are beyond where we are. I'm, I'm trying to tell you today that very soon, our lines will get to you. We are trying to cover about eighty percent of the urban areas in the northern region. So very soon, our lines will get to you. If you are not getting because of maybe rationing, you are, you are covered, your area is under covered, but you are not getting water. Sometimes it's because of once again inadequate funds. We have to still get money, we have to replace pumps. Sometimes instead of three pumps, one is broken, we are using two, the water is not getting to you. But when all this is done, we have enough money, we can tell you that the rationing program will continue well and everybody will get water at the time that they are supposed to. Somebody talked of, um, the Forex. So when we showed you the, the depreciation of the, of the city, you know, we were showing you historical figures, that because of the depreciation plus inadequate revenue we generate, we have made losses, so it's the past. These losses, we have to find a way to pay for it and that one P U R C is the best judge to look at it. But in the future, whatever the, the rate is, like my colleagues from Northern Utilities said, P U R C will look at it and give us the right exchange rates for our operations. The rest of the questions will be answered by my, uh, chief manager in the northern region.
Thank you very much. Um, a lady also wanted to inquire about flow of water to UDS. Um, she didn't tell us which campus, whether Nyankala or here.
This campus.
This campus, water is flowing in the hostels. What, what they named, JS Royal Hostel. Go there, water is flowing right now, it's on my phone, it's on my phone. Go to, some of the, water is flowing at JS Royal Hostel, it's not, it's not on this campus. Go there and check, water is flowing. Our issue is with, um, Nyankala Campus. That one is a very big challenge that, um, we are facing. Um, there, this balon line that supplies that corridor to Talon, that line is very weak and keeps breaking up, won't put water in there. So that one is now plans to change that line, it's about forty-five kilometers. That is a big challenge we must accept. We had an option to supply from Kaladan with a new tank, but it would just go up to that village, wasn't it? Where? It would get to Chana, the other house, guess that day, it can't go over the hill. We are putting in media to see how we can improve, but we replaced that, um, line. Then, and I also asked about whether Nowoni or Dalong is the only two plants that can supply Tamale. Like my colleague for head office said, governments as a priority, is source for funding to construct the Tamale water supply project. Who to bring a new plant on the Asjapi? When that plant comes, now we are doing about hourly thirty thousand cubic meters of water a day. That plant will bring in about ninety thousand. When that plant is constructed, all these things will be a thing of the past. And then finally, like my other colleague said, when it comes to illegal connection, we are all human beings, we can get back people amongst us. But we dismiss them, if you bring this corporate to us, we give you, um, a reward, like they said. Ten percent of whatever charge, we charge the person for doing the illegality, goes to you, we pay you for reporting and our staff is dismissed. We will take you to court and some of them are jailed. In fact, the period that we are discussing, we took one person to court, we dismissed him, because of his age, he was somehow pardoned and cautioned. We dismiss them, so we bring them to us, we reward you for reporting and then we dismiss the staff, thank you.
All right, very well, thank you so much and, um, next batch of, um, questions. So please make it very brief and one entitled to only one question. So make sure that you get your most important question and you ask that one and make it very, very brief, please. Byambo abwazma.
Eh, eh, damnach. Midya no mo, timya so zan yahan kallapsna ki, unso ronwale mbanu mo sani, kanyar no po yana yele, na onde so go. Yamanle eh, unso me midya no mo, tyan tifila, dinyaya swetwa, tesa nyala gani es. Kay yina, ntay, yarden yansong, tankbanay, deme pati yala reyansanle. Intuli, angalma cafe gi viare meni, watay so le, ne eh, Gridco. Dinkaka yam, fe viare ma, biyane biyam pahla, eh, buun, lagre, biyam pahla lagre. But one problem is that, darbutu niyane yam pahme. Yuma na be yuma ni, ayu abdangarla, iyirnas ba, nunde operation shanga. Karyala, sobe no dalesen zoarra sojana ma. Ashirkuma la nyukuru, kasojana mtenya amarafan mpyana yanswai ta. Abakusanga han kaisontanga, sobe jime dorutam, belojime nuto du koti. Ni manma, ikuratinyu kwa, eh, yi, viare, detune so kanata boar mita. Ki, dolo, nolo, cho cho cho, darbutu ne so doa boar mita, katiwala hal, konya tino, olin olin, wakabanyaswe, nola ilegal, ino kosre ilegal ni manma. Ilegal, dengirna loche pulu bala. Watay so le, ibaya toa kan kan na, kwam tumayen na. Na na barkanu, ini kwa iman pa ma, ilefele, laben chatte pa ba, betirwa la pa. Darbutu na zan pa na koutia, sah kulugha, kama manchakulu akanyetimo, ibyoro ponti, kapar eh, doare. Detune lira sa sa, unso yame, pa yasulu, de palay yiren katian yaya, hiswande la biaguma, ama loche pulu iti sargi, detune tiyalea. Te bazama te te banu ma, niti yana ma, desoka te bekiti, katbe sombanu zoarbar ya toa yasna tiyara. So, midya no mo, dinyaya yatoa shale, wu kampi filaki, katunyasa ngané. Eh, ibanku yina teno, eh, injito ma, kwam tumayen na ma, ne viare na ma, yuma na ringarar, ma la etor to guam nan tsa. Timya solu, nuya adaki, yuma na ringaratra binyare, kawaiska, ndisuguan nan tete di, kalela operation sma, denanda.
Tepaya.
Timya solu.
Tepaya.
Dinyaya chey, chey kare yina.
Tepaya. Tepaya, okay, so we are back here in the queue and of course you have only one question, suggestion or opinion and make it very brief for us. Ali La is on microphone, won't laugh naturally. And, um, um, Ali La, please make sure no one joined the queue again, we have only five minutes.
please make sure no one join the queue again. We have only five minutes, only five minutes to take the questions and we are done there. So make it very brief. Alisten, your name, where are you from?
I'm Shaibu Hawa Yankaja from Ghana Senior High School, the alma mater of the president. Please, my question goes to Netco. What provisions are included in the tariff proposal to encourage energy efficiency and conservation? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for making us very brief. Next question, your name, where are you from?
Okay, thank you for the honor. I'm in the person of Abdul Wahab Nana Aisha from Ghana Senior High. And my question is for Netco. My question is, how will they compose their tariff impact low income on household?
Thank you so much. Okay, Honorable Tumda.
Thank you very much. My name is Haruna Hamza Kasankomi. I want to say good afternoon to my boss, Nanyaya Ajantwa. I have a question but I will premise it with a preamble. The presentation from the start to end to me appears deceptive. I have heard the lady from Greedco mentioning the increment uh to about seventy something percent. And then the one from the water company said thirty-one percent. I want to believe that is beyond that. Because we have heard over the time that the increment is around one hundred and thirty percent. So for you to bring us here and say seventy-five percent and thirty-one percent, I think is deceptive. That's number one. I also want to say that for the past years, we can't even remember. For a decade now, there have been increases every now and then. And the issues or reasons behind these increases has to do with, if you like, um exchange rate, we are unable to do A, B, C, and S increase. Today we are here and we are listening and we are hearing the same reasons. Is it as a result of the fact that we have managers who are not up to the task? Or they are incompetent? If they are not up to the task, Ghanaians will be ready and of course citizens will be ready for the increment.
All right.
But if indeed it is that they are incompetent, we will pay the increment but we want to see all of them out of the offices.
All right.
Otherwise, we are not ready for any increment.
All right. Thank you so much. Two questions. Well understood. Next question, your name and who you are directing your question or concern to.
My name is Shaibu Muhar from Ghana Senior High. So I have a suggestion on the tariff calculation. So my suggestion is that the tariff calculation should be done transparently to ensure accuracy and fairness.
Very well. Thank you so much. Next question.
Yeah, I'm Adai Paul Attar from Kete Krachi. Our main concern is about our line.
Okay.
We want a change.
Please, your name and where are you from? You said you are from where?
Kete Krachi.
Okay, and your name again?
Adai Attar Paul.
All right, your question or question?
Uh, eh, Attar, please. We have been experiencing light on and off too much. And yet the bill that comes almost, it is increased at any time. So we are pleading with Netco that they should give us a substation. Because what we have experienced is that, or we have noticed is that, when it is raining, even at our substation, the current substation, they give us light off.
All right, next question.
Yul Musa Rashida, Kanye Taylor.
All right, Alilai. Alilai, I told you you should make sure no one joins again. That time is already far gone and we are not taking more numbers. All right, Tumda.
Musa Rashida.
Musa Rashida, Yapolo.
Kanye Taylor, Tamalongo. Nkwa mboha gurichane yavziyaranu sani. Ndiya mboha ba metalusha duncha ababo boru samle. Amin ba samle nitey su su ni, kachangla ato bogi. Bobe nde bovi, nishela ayuarazaha. Desoka ndiya yemvanya, dalusha duncha ababo dey samle bo. Daba service charges, duncha mboha man shop ra dimi. Kanchini yamblantumda, katemal shop ma. Kachangla ntete mitama. Kabiyal ma nishela yoservice charges ma azaha. No be nde bovi. So denecha antiyayemvaha balabohaguma.
Ah, thank you very much for the opportunity. My name is Honorable Abubakar Abdelhalim, Assembly Member for Togu West Elatral Area. My first call has to do with P U R C. I think they are an institution between service providers and customers. But I think in handling their duties, they are not performing to our expectations. Why am I saying so? When it is alleged that a customer is involved in an illegal connection and the customer is invited to either Ghana Water Company or V R E, the customer himself or herself, together with the service provider and the P U R C, has to sit for the charges to be labeled against the customer. Their P U R C will not be present. When V R E invite a customer, they will charge an amount on the customer without the notice of the P U R C. That's my number one.
All right.
I want to make it clear to everybody that our duty bearers, they always preach virtue but they tend to practice otherwise. I want to bring to the attention of Honorable Ajantwa that there is an operation going on at Netco that when a customer is invited to their premises, first of all, the person will have to go to a particular room where a CID and a police officer is there. Immediately you enter, they will hang off you. Your relative will come and bail you an amount of thousand five hundred Ghana cities or two thousand Ghana cities before you come out for Netco or V R E to charge their amount on you. Is it fair to northern people? This is my question, the last question that I'm going to ask has to do with.
All right, Honorable. I think it's okay now. You have two questions already.
No, it's not two, it's not two. I asked one.
Okay.
It's one.
Okay. All right. That means so many people will not be able to ask the attention because time is already far gone.
The last, the last one.
All right.
The last one.
Honorable, Honorable, please make it very brief for us.
Okay, I'll make it. The last one has to do with.
All right.
If you go to a house, maybe a particular house, and there are ten or five meters in that particular house and one house to be involved in an illegal connection, they will wipe off all the meters. Why?
All right, well noted. Thank you so much, Honorable. All right, next person. No, wait. All right. Uh huh. But what I'm going to do is that the students, the Ganaskans, the Nobiskans, put yourself into groups so that one or two people will represent you and ask one or two questions. The time is already fast when our dignities and our chairs have been sitting for like three hours now. So we beg of you, the students, put yourself into groups, Ganaskans, Nobiskans, and then you get a rep to ask a question on your behalf. All right, I will do.
Yes, my name is Jawari Babaduya, Deputy Director of Works, Universities for Development Studies.
All right.
Yes, that is a response from Ghana Water, a statement made that I want to correct on a concern raised by a student midway through concerning water situation on campus. There, in fact, he puts the issue in its right perspective. We don't have water here on campus. Now, in response, he showed a video of a hostel where water is flowing.
Exactly.
The hostel is not on campus.
Okay.
There is an issue concerning water crisis here on campus.
Okay.
J S Royal is not on campus. On campus, we have hostel accommodations, standard hostel and G U S S. We have lecture halls, we have laboratories. They don't have water flowing in the washrooms. Now, there are two separate lines on the highway. However, it managed to get to other places for them to have water and we don't have water, we don't know. So I'm trying to put the matter into its right perspective, that there is no water flowing here on the Tamale campus.
Very well. Thank you so much. Well understood. Okay, next.
Thank you for this opportunity. Please, my name is Gifti from Ghana Senior High School. Please, my question is directed to all three. Ladies and gentlemen, you all agree with me that such a public engagement is not only an eye-opener but also very educative. So here is my question. How often do your outfits do public engagements such as this and how? Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Next question.
So, my name is Alas and please.
Nam.
A chairman of Savannah Hydrology and double associate vice chairman of Water Tanker Union in Tamalongo.
All right.
Yeah, I want, I'd like to speak the money. Eh, Water Company, kayamal buhaguma, being directed long question material.
So.
M G, Water Company. Nta ha.
Ghana Water Company, your question please.
Nta tisadi tableni, kwa mboha punebo, kwo sebitu zaha. Kwa mpa la biyane, shabianbe, yisweka pompina ma. So bangka, bangnye kwa mpa la kabiye, soka pompina ma. Bangba pompina ma, kare pot water tanker sma. Be yu la kava sawa bra. Yo. Kwa soko, bu, 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 buka pipe line ba yisi. Pipe line be extended chamudamani. So wu pa wu ba hadan sma karama. Bu pa wu la kava sawa bra.
All right. Mbo tapaya. Thank you so much. Next question.
Tapaya pam, Yul Mbonde Abdurrazak Ibn Alaa Hassan. Eh, Maninye Pierre Rosanti, Ghana Institution of Waters. Eh, mboha guma kuchanla P U R C name sani, bena unjule tukyango. Puyaka.
All right, Pan Solo, P U R cinema, ba malabo complaints office. Yoku besan ba nitey, nyinito lodge a complaint ma.
It's not a complaint, it's a question to them.
Question ma, still you can ask it outside there, they have the complaints office, Pan Solo.
M C, M C, please, pardon me, pardon me.
All right.
Eh, P U R C name wali ti, benentiti invitation katakanata.
Okay, Tumda.
Benam wali ti, puyaka, viare, de Water Company, titoye swale, kazang, bema.
Tumda, Tumda.
So mboha guma n'omboha ba, betumde, betuadentune, betumde sham. Biyane i, betumda, karabinyara, bowumda. Northern region wa in particularly Tamale, bemin viare nemne maltab shama. Kadun kaba n'onde dene, kabi kulibowum, customer kamnwele. I can bear witness katiba shahara, biyabinyara, bencham dari sem, media call, zamotu media. Every day, daswata malde, wo discuss something about challenge shanga customers, mi viare nemba la. So, bu wai tina tijili, kabotozangala proposa ma, wote dili nto diatun. Biyabo kulime ne tamal n'nti yina, kabomile n'ba.
All right.
Keta bakarpanyala tamal. Biyala gala gala.
Mbo.
Taba la yendele.
Tapaya.
And then secondly, Water Company.
Uh huh.
Water Company, ba make bu proposa, nete pa mbakwam yuare, patale yale, devyala. Doare, zanshala kanyana. Almost one year, ntap yi, ndarla kwam n'ndan tankane, nsuru kwam, kadare kwam n'ndatankane, kadundwa n'abeyusra, tamale pipe. Alta, betu duse na, kwam pi yi, wu la kama taridi, balebete ma duse. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Tapaya. Next question.
My name is Fadila Nina Mo. I'm a Republic Health student. So I'd like to ask the first speaker who said the vegetation, most of the vegetation should be cleared so that these poles can actually stand. So I'm asking, most of these vegetations, can't they be used into biomass to produce electricity, which could help in reducing the tariffs for us? And secondly, the increments, I'm asking on behalf of my father, how feasible is the increment for my father to pay because he's a retired man? So he doesn't work, how does he pay for that increment? And lastly, on behalf of my other public health students, I'd like to ask the Ghana Water Company, in case we come for internships, would we be accepted? Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Next.
Oh.
Mba.
My name is Abukar Abrilai.
Nam.
Water Tanker traverse charm.
So.
Eh, n'umale toshane yala, chale viare n'usani. Achantu boar formabene, achantu dalé eh, wansi. Kadal wansi lema, dete ndela, loba n'changla two thousand. Ka, halkule l'orba changwa, kwa be nyamita ma. Anto le dwe tijie. Eh, bedu wa nguna, naku changa, bedu, n'umashale kunyala, mamamang, dina. Eh, beda yempa la siela, m'umba eh, last two years, m'umba daba la. Kwama, water eh, gwa ta ma. Biyampa bingba, de haytanto ma karama, bu melso sa wura. Tungban ma, me, nirvon bole, birne kare, detumba. Kapu ba eh, beyera haytanto ma kare. Na uzo, water tanker is, is opi, eh, tu ba northern region. Be, be office ma, buhurale. Etinu birne fu, kame, tisang so shale, n'dule n'onda. Zuo be dinge, be dugu ala pamka, giri we. Zuo katinyala, bu puwa, abor kom, shage tu mual kom, yadon tisu. Ayon no siela. Manazabre, l'ampesarko tu mual kom. Zuo katinyala, bu balahaytanto ma kara, bu yelso shale. Ay, yel, n'uri diyanyamba. Kaduwa, n'bu water ko company, biyama, bu yel, shageka, bahkora me, pointe ma kara.
So. Tapaya, na onde so go. All right, next.
Na onde so go. Yul Mbona Abishoko. Tsana n'ashale, n'ezang, n'son, viare n'man, tsana, ba n'ukonye t'no zobi le. Oh, akana t'le, viare, tsana, to duwana. Bu customers, beto zula, bambe changshoku. Akana kwa bu vabi, kwa bu pune ti amva, bambe changshoku. N'to va, pe we na we. So, de chama kama, n'be zang mita shanga n'at'nan tama, the reader la, digitali. Dinya digital meters, unlike face mask, nda nyu filo wana ra. Kaduwa pa, kadu kana t'zan, abanta, kanya engye sham. Bu pa, ngombe changshoku, be mu kuto read mitama. Ite, weti chantet da powa, ka kana kaba n'bu yola service charge. Kanongo, ngunu to ba bambe charinga service charge. Be me explain, te te bole, service charge. Ayewo de lampai. Ntsa, bambe, nguwa raka usre mita n'ama, tene de la transparency. Because, tambe changshoku wa, te believe mane, be sorta me. Aku buha, kamu usre, digital mita. Be jime ne viar ne sorta me. So, obani n'angsham zaha, kaba malati, we nome. So my suggestion me, ne kama, be categorize like customers into two different categories. As in lifelines and lifelines. N'ukuyala ni vosha ma, bambe mi be charinga lifeline. Ombe be charinga, na lifeline. Ngokumi, ngokuma power. To bu pa, o nyala na lifeline, be lifeline. Obomi deni, I am be sham kanya lifeline. Oda uni suzo, de bu kuwele, karsalan jime, no landama. N'to ba l'ankuwele, kala jime no dama.
All right.
Understand ya. So manre mi sham, drinyawa kama, be lema, n'amba vego. Yul wa n'ama, be duwana n'ama. Dinya lifelines, bambo, be pa lifelines.
All right.
Kabretu, the flat rate, de nam bogi, the illegal connections.
All right. Thank you so much. Iskayaro, next.
Uh.
Mia soru. Viar e bezalbe chatso teng banne. Karapolo suhlateng banma kabatu. Tedi mia soru. Viar e. Netco. PRC. Water Company. Be suhlateng banma kabataba. Kabajin de zor. Bejin de zorma. Beneficial dem biae offices ma apune. De sa kanana ma. Man e benirma kabatira. No kwanamboye tu achatar gembala. Salamu alaykum.
Alaykum salam, tapaya. Thank you so much. Alright, so the dignity smart, the reps um. Uh, tin your question smart from tenana ma. Then katelabna. Te daale fana mosa nyanya. Bubana male shale. Katzen nyanyan zangpah. Then katelabna reps from Ghana Water Company. And of course um. Netco. Okay. To um dan yawa.
Yeah, suhru. Suhru nwele mba tina san.
Nam.
Suhru nwele kutao sakatelsada. Namayika mungdira. Ha suhru nwele ma sahqambe san. Yel mangla tesaanu babshyelma. Manenye ni dabdatyam sahur na. Tesaanu babshyelma yetu ayini. Te yel muhtara du. Ka te zabrma. Wa ma manenye mpahe. Viar e mane watal suwes nimsha. Ni bejim suhuru. Syanguone tin yarkom biala biala ma. Uya durma. Be paha suhuru. Be kya ka u nma. Ka tungkun yar syanguone kuama biala biala ma. Ka u nma. Ka tlanyar du kuama lala. Ni me dadam. Kuama mbo omi ya dadam. Du manenye mpahe. Suhuru ashalbala. Ni te suhur ba me. Be panga mbemanga. U nen durma. Ka tin yar kuama.
So, thank you very much. My name is. Mohamed Rashad Abdullah. I am the secretary to the Gukena and I'm representing him on this occasion. I'm also. Uh, kalungso boana. Uh, I listened to. The gentleman who did the presentation on behalf of Ghana Water Company. In fact, I was playing with him. And until a time. I decided to part ways with him. Where I was playing with him. I heard him say that um. All that they are doing for us, all the good equipment. They show on the slides over there. That was as a result of the monies we are paying to them. And I was so happy with that. And he was said whatever they do is feeling feeling is whatever. They do everything and then they want us to see everything clear. So I said, okay, then after that, I'll tell Greco Netco to also replicate what they are doing. He said they were not going anywhere. They only get the money from us. Until he said there was a policy shift. And over there he brought in an issue of loans. And they said they are now going to factor the loans into this tariffs. So I want to find out from him. If you were doing all these good things minus loans and it was faring so well. And now you are now telling us you are going in for what necessitates the going for the in for the loan? And then the second thing I want to find out from you. Do you think going in for these loans will actually improve what it intends to improve? Because we have seen a lot of documentary, a lot of uh. Uh editorias and what have you. Where loans contracted were misappropriated. How sure are we that when you also go in for this loan? You will not do same as others have been doing? So and also it tells me that. Our problems regarding payments of bills and what have you is not ending anytime soon. Well, we all know that when you go in for loan. Certainly you have to milk us in order to service those loans. Are you assured as that you wouldn't milk us as a result of contracting this flu? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Chief. Tapaya pam. Okay, so we'll now come back to the reps. Um Ghana Water Company and of course Greco and Netco. And we urge you to make it very, very brief for us, please. Madame Chairperson is saying that we have five minutes for all reactions and comments from you. Please make it very brief for us.
Okay, thank you so much. I'll start with the online loans. Okay, so this is what I said and this is what happens. In 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 the tariffs or what you pay as water bills. It does not include. The infrastructure, let me say the capital investment, the treatment plant. All that you pay for your water bills is the cost of energy. Cost of chemicals or treatments. Some operational things. So the government builds the treatment plant for us. The government has gone in for the loans already. Eh? So these loans are already there and they have built treatment plants at various places. So some are still there on the books of government. And government is saying that from 2019, that is 2020 ongoing. All the loans that it took for us to build treatment plants. We should find a way of paying for it so that. They can also go in for those to expand or build more treatment plants. So it's not new loans. These loans have already been cared to build alone, to build Yendi. Then maybe the new water treatment plant that is coming Tamali. Maybe look all most of all these things government got it as loans. And he's saying that from 2019. We should discuss with Purasi if we can pay it back small, 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 small. So that it can also go for more for us. Um climate change. I think climate change is a global phenomenon. What we are doing is that in our designs. We are incorporating uh structures that can withstand. Uh be resilient to uh um heavy rains that will wash away our our civil structures. In some areas we create our reservoirs that we'll have reserves in case of drought that we can fall on. So all most of our new treatment plants have structures to mitigate the impact of climate change. Um, I think my colleague will talk on hydrants. Intentions. Please don't worry at all. The lady that talk of intention, come to our offices and you will be assisted. Transparent calculation of tariffs. I think that is what we are doing. If you go to the website of PRC. All the proposals are there. Everything, this one we gave you summary. You will see the figures. Our costs is every is everything is there. So it is very transparent. Rates are deceptive. Oh, my brother. Please Ghana Water, we didn't say 31%. We only said that. Our tariff increase is a result of our production. Plus our transmission plus our distribution.
Uh yes, we share, we really share your concern. We, I think you handled that one eh?
Yeah, gafaranana ma. Uh, yeyen yel lajou. Eh yewaka glabna troomne. Foshangab yon iyon ka fable ne benyar kuam. Yemang yela tiniyala 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 zaha. Ni me toku fable shazoma chikabenyara. Ni yani re pam. Pa vodak bandoble nyama. Pa vobatbenyar kuam. Amanu klu pa voo. Mndeleka pa voka. Ndayana kong nyavle. Pa vora nyar na kuam 24/7. Dakam trawera nyar na kuam. Mandana pa dombanda diro pa vau. Mbanadiri pa vavabambo. Amadunme kibam sabinyaru konye ni eh vetong. Bo is a vetin. Uh, yewa. Ne fo. Digne laye ne fo ni yewa kabee. Desumska awuti. Lurdech. Ilusha pulo ambieni pulo kabenyar kuama. Dezoma office yomiti sokama zaha. Un kamal problem. Assemblema biaa kambe biala office nema. Yechi kabu bank. Ka te gate fundamantinya. De to yela yine mama ndapipapa tarachau. Kalabarapetarama. Garamutiriya kuam. Dezopraye ma kikana office imbiyene. Iminiyambiyene. Yitoka na katelire zo. Salamu alaykum.
Thank you very much. Um, one of our respected chiefs mentioned that. Now water flow is quite good. And he wants it to be the same during the dry season. Which I work very hard and ensure that it improves during the dry season. Then with the hydrant that had been suspended. Um, this issue has been long outstanding. The people of Tamale blame Ghana Water Company and even accuse us of selling water. But they say we own tankers and we sell the water. Because of that allegation, water does not flow to their houses. So my CEO in his wisdom want water to float your houses and stopping us Ghana Water Company. From sending the water out of our tankers. Said now that all the hydrants should be blank. Then it is blank. So that water can flow to your houses. Everybody here knows about that accusation. That Ghana Water Company, we own tankers and we sell the water to people at high cost. That's having allegation. So my CEO want to stop that. So he blanks the hydrant. So water can flow to your houses. If you the same people now want the hydrant to be open. Petition the CEO. And then he will try to open. Then we open. We don't have any problem at all. Once you accuse us and he has blanked the hydrant. The same way petitioning him for him to give a distraction to open, we open. The last one concerns sanctions um that we give to people who have done illegal connections. Please, those sanctions, if you look at the letter, you copy PRC. So PRC is in the known of every sanction we give. Anybody who does illegal connection. So it is it is transparent. Calculation is on the letter. And we give PRC a copy. So they are aware of every sanction given illegal connection. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So for Greco's tariff in relation to what we pay in our homes. As I explained before, the electricity that gets to our homes is generated. Is transmitted and is distributed. So the cost of transmission is what we have presented as Greco. And that one we transmit it to Netco. Netco is a bulk customer. So Netco pays for transmission. So the tariff that you pay Netco includes the transmission cost. And therefore Netco will pay that to Greco. Now the component of our revenue requirement, as we showed. I think because of time we didn't go through, but it is published on our website. Each activity is listed clearly on the website, which gives you the tariff calculation. That is the total amount of money we need for each year. Divided by the amount of energy. The unit of energy that we will transmit to meet the entire Ghana demand is on the website. And then also um the use of the vegetation we clear for biomass. Yes, um. The generation sources, that's the fuel that we use for generation in Ghana mainly is gas. Is um liquid oil, liquid oil, liquid fuel. And solar and then hydro. And we don't have biomass currently on on the network. However, individuals and entrepreneurs could make use of such opportunity to use the vegetation that is cleared. To generate electricity and then consume it as renewable. My colleague here will speak on the Kete Krachi issue.
Thank you very much. Our brother from Kete Krachi was complaining about uh. Very low voltages and frequent outages in that corridor. Um, this is a situation that we are aware of. And it's basically due to the nature of the network in that corridor. There are very long lines, distribution lines that are feeding the communities there. But there are two major things that we are working on that would improve the situation. The first one, Netco has already displayed the bimbila feeder. To help in addressing the issue. So instead of bimbila load being part of what goes all the way to Kete Krachi. That has been separated. Now Greco is in the process of upgrading the transformer there from 33 to 66 MVA capacity. That's double what is currently existing. That will also improve the situation. But in the long term, there's the main one that will be the game changer. And that is the big push project that is going to put a BSP at Pandai. And then another one at Salaga. So when all this are done, we are very certain that the situation there will improve tremendously. But we all agree that these projects need money and financing. Which is why we are here to appeal to you to support us. Thank you. Alright, there was another issue about renewable energy. I'll let my colleague say a few words on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, I want to talk about the impact of renewables on the on the grid. Um, as we know, government policies that we should have about 10% of electricity generated to be renewable. Once you are going to increase your renewable generation, you need to expand the capacity that you have. So Tamale is going to have a renewable solar plant in Tamale, which will be over 100 megawatts. In that vein, it means that we need to expand our substation at Adubili. In doing that, we need fresh capital to do that. We are also doing another one at Yendi. Yendi Solar Project, Buipower has a solar project there. In doing that, we need income to be able to expand that. When we get to Pualugu, to the Pualugu. To they are doing another renewable there. That one we need um income to do that. And then one of the students said something about the impact that is going to have on um. The low income Ghanians. We all know that the um. The average Ghanaian or the low income Ennah most of the time don't have access to electricity. When we're able to get enough revenue, we expand our network such that the lowest of lowest. The people who don't even have income at all will have electricity. Currently, we are not doing 100% electricity penetration. So once we're able to raise capital, we'll be able to expand access to electricity. Such that the average low income Ennah, who probably doesn't have access to electricity, will have that. And so we are requesting for for that. And then the other issue on the solar again is that. We will need bidirectional meters. We also need compensator, valve compensators. Because the solar project don't produce valves. They are mostly kilowatts or megawatts um production plant. So we need compensator like carb tanks in our substation. And that will require fresh capital. And so we will need, we'll need that. Alright.
Alright, um. A couple of questions were addressed to Netco. So we will attempt to address them. Um scarcity of meters. In fact, it is true. Netco has not been able to provide meters the way we are supposed to. We admit that. It is one of the things that we are seeking to do. In our proposal for this tariff. We plan to supply 1.4 million meters over five years. That is roughly about 300,000 meters in the five-year period. So we are seeking to address this meter shortage problem once and for all. Once we get this tariff approved. Um, 31% deceptive. I think we corrected that. We said that 31% is the average for the five years. Some of the years will be 2%, others will be 3%. But what we are asking for is the first year. We are asking for a 174% increase. That when you spread it over the five years, it will be 31% per annual. That is the correction that we want to make. ECG charging um less than what Netco is charging. Netco and ECG, the end user tariff. End user tariff is the generation cost, transmission cost and distribution service charge. That is what we charge you as a consumer. It is the same between ECG and Netco. So Netco and ECG do not charge different end user charges. So that is the answer to Chief's question. Right, my colleagues will pick any other issues that are asked. Do you have any?
Okay, thank you. Um, there is a student who asked about energy efficiency. And conservation. And how our tariff is addressing that. Um, energy efficiency and conservation is normally a demand side issue. What we do is to provide budget to educate the public. How to use the energy efficiently. So we can educate the public to go for high star rated fridges. To go for more efficient lamps, just like we have phased out the incandescent lamps. And to use more efficient gadgets. And we do this in collaboration with the regulators, especially the Energy Commission. So you realize that some time ago, there was a ban in the importation of used fridges. That was a collaborative effort between the utilities and the regulators. So yes, we do that. Uh, we have the energy conservation in mind. Benefit of the tariff to households. Low income households. The issue is that that even the low income households needs electricity and needs it reliably. Okay, because electricity is the only form of energy that could do many forms of work in the households. You don't have, although the household is low. We want to a situation where the household should be able to use electricity safely at their own health. We are trying to move away from using uh fuel sources that are detrimental to the health of everybody. irrespective of whether the person is rich or poor. So the tariff will improve the quality of electricity to the household and has a a long lasting effect. Why do we need infrastructure yearly? The issue is that even if we stop buying electricity gadgets. Every customer should not add any electricity gadget in his home. And even if we decide that we will not extend electricity to anybody again. We will still need to invest to replace one infrastructure. Because as the equipment operate, it wears. So we cannot invest in infrastructure once and for all. And there is a need for us on annual basis to replace this infrastructure. Now, when you add myself and you. Uh, I know most of us, once we get some increase in salaries, just like the chief was saying. I would like to have air conditioning in every room. I would like to have every gadget that I can think of. And it it puts stress on the electricity infrastructure. And for that matter, we have to invest on the electricity infrastructure. So we cannot do away with investment. It's not an issue of incompetence. But it's a it's a need. That is the nature of the technology. Thank you.
Alright.
Right. Okay, one last thing. I think um there was a question. A question that we do not accept part payments. Please, we do. If you have issue with your debt, go to our offices and agree a payment plan with them. Thank you.
Alright, very well. Thank you so much, gentlemen representing Netco, Greco and of course Ghana Water Limited. And again, let me remind you again that it is the Northern and Savannah Region Public hearing. For the 2025 to 2030 major tariff review here. At the UDS auditorium. Oh, we are almost there as to close the program. Ladies and gentlemen. Right about now, we are inviting honorable Nanyar gentleman, chairperson, stakeholder committee, PRC. To come and give us the closing prayer. You are not spending my time again. Alright, let me just get to the table. Maybe madam, you can do that.
Thank you very much. It's been a very wonderful time spending time with you. You've given us very insightful thoughts. And the PRC is going to take on board in the final decision. The PRC is going to take on board the final decision of the tariff. We have technical indicators for the tariff. But there's also. An indicator that is the decision variable. And that is why we are here. The decision variable, we factor in whatever has been said here. We also urge the utilities to create the atmosphere for public education. Wherever we go, we hear complaints about meters, about their service. And we urge them that they should be very close to their people. I'm mutiating it. Consumer education is key. So they should let you know what your rights are and what your responsibilities are. It is very, very key. We thank you very much. There's also a question on the 1% energy levy. That's 1%. It is just for crude oil. So if you go through the program or through the presentation. If ECG was here. If VRI was here, that is the generation company. You'd find that all the presentations that are being done, there is nothing on crude oil. Because we have, when it comes to generation, we have thermal and hydro. And thermal, we use gas and crude oil. So that 1% is just for crude oil. So it is not factored in the presentation that we have. If you look at it, Kim, it's more gas. Uh, somebody also asked a question on his father, her father who has retired. We have a lifeline tariff within the tariff structure. And that lifeline tariff is for those who are within the vulnerable group. Especially our retirees. So that lifeline tariffs caters for those who are not working, those who are vulnerable, those who are sick and at home. So don't worry. Within the tariff structure, we have the lifeline tariff to cater for your father. Thank you very much. And we've had a very pleasant day. We thank the traditional leaders for spending time with us. We thank everybody who has taken time off to be with us. We hope that this is not the last time we are meeting. As we are in this arena, as we are in this process, as we are in the business of utility provision. We know that we will certainly meet again some way somehow. Thank you very much. God bless you.
Alright.
All right. Okay, very well. So we are almost there. Manager, I don't know if, manager?
Uh, to the utility service providers, it appears that our chiefs are protesting that the concerns they raised have not been addressed. Uh, I don't know if you, those concerns skipped you. Yes. And more particularly, Netco, Netco. Yes, yes, can? If, if you can do that briefly, can you provide some responses to their concerns? Mr. Hashim, are you providing some responses? Okay.
Um, I've, I've revisited my notes and picked up a number of issues that we inadvertently skipped. Um, number one, I think it has to do with visiting the communities, um, at dawn and maybe at times that some of the customers complain of. Um, it is true. It is because of the situation we find ourselves in. And we have been engaging both the political leadership and traditional leadership of the town to find a way to address this. I'm sure some of you might have seen some communication in social media and other traditional media of engagement that Netco management had with the NDC Party leadership in town. So we are continuing to engage stakeholders in the town to address some of these issues. But it must be said that it is the kind of problem that you face that determines the kind of solution that you deploy. We are not doing this out of disrespect or intention to cause inconvenience for customers. It's just that the situation demanded that we find ways of addressing the problem. But as it has been discussed with political and local authority, we are sure that we will be able to find common grounds or middle ground to address this challenge. Um, the issue of visiting communities without engaging the chiefs, it is one of the things that we try as much as possible not to do. We must always engage chiefs when we are entering communities. We have our protocols that we follow, which is the entry requirement when you are entering the community, how to enter the community, that very much includes engaging the chief of the community. So if there have been any instances where we have entered communities without properly engaging the chiefs, we are sorry for that. We will reconsider our processes going forward. But we must be quick to also say that there are instances where going in will require that you don't make too much noise. Because if you are going in to detect something, you must necessarily go in quietly before you can see some of the things that you want to detect. So that might be why we do some of those things. But ordinarily, we engage the chiefs when we are entering the communities.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, I think we are done now. And of course, again, hairdressers and beauticians, thank you so much for coming. The dressmakers, thank you so much. Netka and of course, GPRTU, Ganasko students, thank you so much. And of course, Medco and then Gridco reps and of course, Ghana Water Limited. Prison officers, we appreciate your time and your efforts. And of course, Northern School of Business students and of course, the sales officers and of course, um, the police officers in our midst, thank you so much for coming. Military from the Camina Barracks, thank you so much for coming. And of course, military from the Bauer Bracks as well. We appreciate your time and your efforts. And of course, the immigration officers. And of course, um, Honorable Assemblyman for the area, Zakaria Abdurrahman Okucha, also aspiring for the chairman of the constituency. Thank you so much. And of course, the ambulance services, Welshberg, thank you so much. And, um, all the students, of course, University for Development Studies, we thank you so much for coming and your patience to be part of the program. The Assemblymen, the general public, thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, we are almost at the end of the program. And as I mentioned earlier on, we want to thank so much for everyone who has made the time to be part of this wonderful engagement. I may not be able to take the list again, but I'm sure if you hear your name, you are most grateful. Thank you so much. And again, those that did not get the food, please stay back. They are still bringing some food to make sure that you are safe. Ah, no, dear fans.